Well, good evening. Call the regular meeting of the Ames City Council for October 28th, 2025 to order. Welcome, everybody. We're going to start out with a proclamation that will get into the business. Kelly, you going to join me up here?
I'll start then.
National Community Planning Month, whereas change is constant and affects a broad range of goals and issues for a community, and whereas communities seek to support the quality of life for their residents and address a wide range of interests for housing, recreation, economic development, neighborhoods, sustainability, preservation, urban design, and transportation; and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. Community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and residents who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation; and whereas this month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. The American Planning Association as professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation for an equitable, resilient, and sustainable community; and whereas the acknowledgement of the National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly thank and recognize the valuable contributions of professional planners, but also the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning and zoning commission and other residents who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Ames. Therefore, I, John A. Hayler, Mayor of the City of Ames, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as National Community Planning Month in the city of Ames. It's my pleasure to introduce Kelly Deekman, our Housing and Plan Director. Do you have any comments you want to make?
Not really. All right. We're all, all my staff's very grateful to be here, work for this city, and know that we have a council, a council that's invested in our comprehensive plan and the community's betterment, and it's a joy to be here and work with everybody in the city.
Tonight, hearing not entertained, motion to approve consent.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Betcher?
Aye.
Beatty Hansen?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Move on to public forums. This is a time we set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business that are not listed on the agenda. Please understand council will not take any action on your comments at this meeting. Do the requirements of open meeting law. We might do so at a future meeting. And ask you to limit your comments to three minutes or less. If anyone wants to address council under public forum on anything which is not on the agenda tonight. All right. Seeing none. Ted? My apologies.
No, I'm sorry.
If you would introduce yourself, and you may start.
Hello, everybody. My name is Delaney Graef, and I have the privilege of being the College of Agriculture and Life Sciences Senator for student government at Iowa State. And unfortunately, I was not able to attend the joint meeting last week, but I heard it was a great success. But I have some issues my constituents wanted me to address, so that is why I'm here tonight. First and foremost, the Brookside Park project. My constituents have a couple concerns. The project does an amazing job minimizing water velocity, and I think the Oxbow and the Jaywards and the Root Balls do an excellent job at that. However, that all could have been implemented without heavy machinery use and degradation of our woodlands. In addition, stormwater outlets are also going into Iowa Creek. And I think the first step we need to implement besides just putting that water into the creek is to implement swalls as you have done historically in the past. Iowa historically has been a place that's had its name dragged in the mud due to water pollutants, and the last thing I want is for Ames to get that mark as well. In addition, the project lacks inflammation of proper tree planting, more ornamental trees. Grass is planted along the banks, which I think is amazing for the disturbed soil of this project, but this ecosystem evolved with mature, large trees, not ornamental, small shrub trees. And the animals evolved with it being a heavy woodland. The people evolved with it being a woodland. And the future of Ames also needs to see it as a woodland. In addition, trees also replenish the aquifer that supply the town with water, and I think there needs to be better inflammation of ensuring trees are in our future. The last thing I would like to address is the fire station relocation. I'm really happy with the net zero plans of the fire station. I think that is amazing step into the future, and I'm really proud of everything the government has done to support that. However, College Creek does run through the parcel that it will be built on, and I really employ the council to implement ecological goals and minimizing pollution into that waterway during the construction process. Overall, I know this council values green initiatives, and I know you'll make the right steps, and I'm really proud for you guys hearing me. But for the future of Ames, to see the beauty of this place, we need to make the first steps in preserving it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Counsel, and no one, you're just going to come as a curveball to you. But I would like to move item number 24, first reading of ordinance establishing pet licensing program up agenda, and then we will then continue on. If there's no objections, we'll go ahead and do that. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. So we're going to move the first reading of an ordinance establishing a pet licensing program up to the agenda. The way we'll do it is Chief Huff will give a brief overview. We've gotten a lot of emails from individuals, maybe some of you here that want to address council. My public comment will be invited, and then council will make a decision. So Chief, we'll let you go ahead and do your overview, and then we'll take any council comments.
Good evening. Thank you. We have discussed the idea of the pet licensing problem, pet licensing program a couple of times. So Ames is one of only two cities in the, in Iowa in the top 15 by population, and the only university town that does not have a pet licensing program. In the top 30 cities in Iowa, Ames is only one of five that does not have a pet licensing program. This puts our community behind in responsible pet ownership and public safety standards. The proposed PLP or pet licensing program offers a cost-effective, community-enhancing solution with wide-reaching benefits for our customers, their pets, and our animal control and shelter operation. So a couple of the key benefits, faster reunification of lost pets with their owners, so we can trace those licenses 24/7, whether that's the police department or animal control, unlike rabies tags, which can be checked during business hours, basically. Will hold pets a little bit longer when they're licensed so that we can reunify them with their owners. Ensures rabies compliance, so the license ensures pets are vaccinated against rabies, protecting public health. Microchip accuracy. So when a pet would be licensed, if it has a microchip, we'll make sure all of that information is also up to date in our records management system. It's called Chameleon. Another thing that's come up recently, reclaim fees. So unlicensed pets will have the impound fee reduced by the amount owed for the license if it's not already licensed. So that will ensure there's no extra cost to get your pet out. About 80% of the pets that come into the shelter do not have a collar or identification. Through some very generous donations from some of our partners, they will leave with a collar and a license while supplies last, but we normally have them on hand. And so we've had some good partners that have donated those collars, and so we'll make sure the pet leaves with one. We know it's also a disincentive to own more pets than you can reasonably care for, and we've talked about this before. Every single year, sometimes multiple times a year, we find animals living in really, really terrible conditions that should not exist. We believe the PLP will help us with some of those cases. As you know, we've talked about before, we've had cases where 30 or more cats were in an apartment. We had a case when 27 cats were living in a vehicle. Those are not good conditions. And obviously, another benefit is the financial support for our animal services here in Ames. As you know, we'll be moving into a larger, more appropriate space for our animal control and shelter, and when we do that, there will be some additional operating costs that we'll have to deal with. So we've estimated at the very high end, which I don't think is very likely, $430,000 based on the population data that we think we have. Realistically, it's going to be much less than that. Our startup costs for the program are about $18,000. That includes the cost to do the programming for Chameleon or the, the program that we use to, to track everything, plus we have to buy tags and a few other things. That will be taken care of through our donation fund, and then through the pet licensing program itself, that will then fund the program through the future. That first initial cost of programming is a one-time fee. Obviously, buying tags is an ongoing fee. I've also heard lately that we don't pick up many cats. It's mostly dogs. Well, if you thought that, you'd be wrong. Our total intakes for 2024 were 582 cats and 303 dogs. We actually take in almost twice as many cats. And of those, the strays, 336 cats, 156 dogs. So cats and dogs are both pretty well represented in the animals that come into the shelter. We adopt out about 500 pets or reclaimed annually here in Ames, so that's a big number. Another added benefit, as you know, we have the dog park. At some point in the future, the same software that's used to manage the licensing program can be used to manage the, getting a tag for the dog park. And so that will streamline that process a little bit for everybody. So a little bit about the implementation of the program. One, we're not going to go door-to-door and look for animals that are not licensed. That is not a part of what we can do. We're going to encourage compliance through education and not intrusion. We're also going to build the licensing fee into the adoption and reclaiming lost pets. So every pet that comes out of the shelter will be licensed, whether it's adopted or reclaimed. And we'll also offer a one-time free return service. If you live in Ames and we pick up a dog, the dog or cat that's licensed, we, if we can get ahold of you, we'll transport that pet back to you. So those are kind of the highlights of the pet licensing program is, as we see it, the cost is 12, or what we're proposing is $12 for an altered pet or spayed and neutered pet, or 24 for an unaltered pet, which in most cases is either $1 or $2 a month. I take any questions if you have.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Ryan, I'll start with you, and see if you have any questions since you're online.
Thank you. I don't know that I do necessarily. I'll just wait to hear others or hear input.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, do we have any idea what kind of compliance we would get? And I ask that because the city of Des Moines looked at their pet licensing program a couple of years ago and, and determined that they were only getting about 23% compliance and that they were actually spending more money on enforcement than they were in the fees that they were collecting. And so I couldn't really find any other hard data in Iowa, and I don't know if that's something that we looked at.
It's pretty difficult to get those numbers because a lot of times you don't know how many pets are in the community. We just make estimates. But as far as spending more on enforcement, that's probably not going to happen in our case because what we're looking for, one, is voluntary compliance. We want people just to do it because it's the right thing to do and because it, it helps us all. When we encounter an animal that's not licensed, that's when we'll take the action to make sure that they do get licensed. But again, because we're not intending to go door-to-door, we're not intending to go out and look for this, probably like a lot of other things, complaint-based, or if we happen to run across an animal. So I don't think our enforcement costs are going to go up at all because we're not going to go out and actively look for it. We just don't have the staff to do that.
Other questions?
Chief, when this was first presented, just based on the face value of this, I was supportive of this initially. But I have been amazed at the pushback this has received on Facebook. And I'm curious, I didn't ask you this in advance, so have you looked at any of the social media responses like on Ames People or other social media to get a flavor of the concerns the public has?
So I've heard other people tell me what's on there. I do not look at any of that myself.
And so, so you're, and we'll get a chance to hear some of this tonight, but how would you, if you're able to take sort of a preliminary bite of the apple, to think that, how would you respond to the concerns that you've heard surfaced?
Well, I'm not sure if I know of all the specific concerns. I have heard people call it a pet tax. I have heard it's some kind of money grab. It's really none of those things. It's really to encourage responsible pet ownership and obviously to support our shelter. And our shelter does a lot more than a lot of other shelters in Iowa because we not only have shelter services, but we have the animal control part. So we, they do a lot with a little, and I think this kind of program is very beneficial for the entire community. I know it may not be popular all the time with everyone, but I know we have hundreds of volunteers at the shelter, and I think they're pretty supportive of this concept.
And, and so you did a nice job of laying out the key benefits. If, if you were to try to weight those benefits, how, what, what percentage would you say is providing for financial support of the animal shelter versus some of the other benefits in terms of reunification and disease maintenance, those kinds of things?
So I would say that those other things are much more important, and they also make it so our staff spends less time on reunification, on compliance, and all those other, other things. So it really supports both ways. Obviously, there is a, there is a revenue side to it, but the important thing is the responsible pet ownership, reunification of animals, so we're spending less time. As you know, we, we don't have, we're not overstaffed down at the shelter. We rely heavily on volunteers to do a lot of the work, thousands of hours every year, in fact. And so this helps us there, too. It's not just money, it's time.
And one final question. So as you're working on the budget for maintaining the animal shelter, how critical would this revenue be in order to maintain the animal shelter? I mean, how, how important is this? Do we need this funding stream to make it work?
I think it's going to be pretty important. We're going to be moving into a building that's quite a bit larger than the one we're in now. The one we're in now is very inefficient as well. So there will be, there will be higher operating costs with a larger building. At some point in the future, we may need to add staff. This could potentially help us with that. It's a little hard to say because we don't know what the compliance will be. We do believe there will be a proportion of people that will be happy to license their pets for the benefits that you get out of it. But I think it is important as we look to get a new shelter up and running that I think will be beneficial for everyone.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions?
Chief, can you say anything about how you or the committee that looked at this initially arrived at the pricing that's been recommended? Because I'm seeing things all over the map, and just to take Des Moines, which Amber brought up, $15 for the initial license for altered cats, but $35 for unaltered cats. So it's more than twice the cost for unaltered cats. In Iowa City, $10, and then $40. So they seem to be somewhat random in, in the amounts?
Yeah, they're a little all over, and I, we never really did get a good sense from people how they landed on the numbers that they did. I think part of what we looked at was a dollar a month for an altered pet seemed pretty reasonable, $12 a year. And we do want to encourage people to make sure that they spay and neuter their, their animals so we are not overpopulated. And so I think that's really the reason that we, it's a, it's double for those animals as an encouragement. So when we tried to kind of look at what the average would be, and we're right around, I think that average, not, not at the high end, not at the low end, but somewhere in the middle.
So a couple of questions. One, we heard from a few people that already have microchipped their dogs, and there's sort of an ongoing cost already to them for that service. Have we considered providing any sort of discount because they have taken that step? And then two, whether or not we've considered, again, just some kind of a sliding fee scale, thinking about that some people may have a service animal, and that might be an extra burden to somebody or because of their income. Have those things been considered?
So the first, first question again was?
First question was about the microchipping.
Oh, so we, so we frequently have microchip clinics where it's either low cost or no cost to do the microchips. With the pet licensing program, we wouldn't be able to afford to offer a free microchip with the license because the microchip itself is like $5. So that's about half the cost right there. So that would be pretty cost prohibitive. But updating our system with all of that information, so you have the information from the license and the microchip together, will make it easier for us to reunite owners with pets. As far as sliding scale or service, service animals, I don't remember that ever coming up. That's a good point. Sliding scale, no, I'm not sure how we would manage it, to be honest, with the system.
Okay.
Rachel, any questions?
Yeah. So I see on the comparison document, all of these are annual fees. Is there any cities that do like a lifetime, like a one-time fee instead of an annual license requirement?
Not that we found. There could be, but I think there are 71 cities listed on the spreadsheet, and of those, there's all an annual fee.
So is there any benefit that pet owners would get on an annual basis rather than like the one-time cost of enrollment and updating all the information into our system?
Well, trying to think. So I think the idea would be if you did a lifetime license fee, that it might be lower total than what you would pay per month or per year, I'm guessing. I think the problem with that is you could pay for a lifetime fee and not to be crass. Some animals live longer than others, and you know, you could lose a pet to disease or accident or whatever, and then I'm, I'm not sure people would be happy with that.
Okay.
Emily, any questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions. So a lot of those students, they pay pet rent if they live off campus and they have to.
Can you put your microphone just a little closer to you, please?
Is that better? Okay. So some of the students, if they live off campus, they'll pay pet rent and then pet deposits and a bunch of other fees and have required training or another paperwork before they're allowed to have a pet in their apartment. And similarly to on-campus, they'll have trainings as well. And I was just wondering if the additional license fee, if you think that that would be a burden on the students as a, like a duplicate existing cost that they already have to go through all of these hoops to jump through when they have to get a pet, they have to do all the things to get a pet with their property, the property rental companies, and then the, the university as well.
Sure. And, and those are kind of separate issues. I understand those. But the, that doesn't help with reunification, the responsible pet ownership type stuff necessarily. And I think that's part of the reason that we have a pretty low license fee is we're still looking at, it's $1 a month, $12 a year in most cases, and we think that's pretty reasonable.
And then I was also wondering about if you would think that there would be any like disproportionate effects on student renters and people living in residence halls if the, the enforcement is reactive rather than proactive, or maybe a landlord would put the, the pet licensing as a requirement for their lease, where maybe a homeowner would not want to do the license right away? And so there could be some disproportionate effects there.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if other communities have that, where if you had a pet, it had to be licensed as a part of your lease. So it's hard for me to answer. I'm not sure how many would do that.
All right. All right, we open a public comment. So if council follows the city manager recommendation, this item would be brought back to council in December for a decision on the program, and that is to allow for additional public comment and input. And my policy, our policy, that if you offer public input on a topic at one meeting, you are not able to come back and offer public input again. You can certainly email council, you can contact us. So I'm going to open a public comment. You're welcome to come up tonight and offer input, but you'll not be allowed to come back again and say additional things at the following meeting. But we will also have public comment at the following meeting. I would just ask that you introduce yourself, your name, and then also limit your comments to three minutes or less. And so with that, if anyone wants to address council tonight on this topic?
Hello, my name is Briar Ott, and I am actually the secretary of the Ames Kennel Club. So our kennel club has a very large number of members who own intact animals, and our membership has expressed a large concern in especially the price gap for intact animals versus spayed or neutered. The breeders in our kennel club are those who show their dogs, prove their dogs, breed to the breed standard, complete all the health testing, microchip their puppies before they leave. They are the reputable breeders, and there is a large concern on why reputable breeders who don't allow their dogs to perhaps run at large or have are are responsible for a large amount of dogs are incurring the cost of reunification when in reality the pets don't have to be microchipped. Would it be better for the city to host more microchip clinics or require a microchip to go with the license where you scan the dog and you have the information right there? I could have my dog licensed, and if he gets out without a collar on, they would still have to scan his microchip. But what if he's not microchipped? How would they know that that's him? I bring these comments to city council to consider as far as the fees go. The other question that came up was at what age would the spay or neuter requirement be required? You know, if the new requirements, and you can look this up through the Iowa State DVM Therio Department, is that spaying and neutering, especially of large breeds, is twelve to eighteen months, if not twenty-four? So if you have a puppy or a growing dog that needs to stay intact for the longevity of their health, is it fair that you might not have a choice or you're trying to do the best for your pet and you're still being charged the extra twelve dollars a year? That is something to consider. So thank you for your time.
Before you leave, I'll make sure, because I should clarify, too, questions will not be answered by council.
That's okay.
But I'm going to try and write them down and then ask staff to respond to questions before you leave.
Okay.
So your question is a fee discrepancy between the twelve and twenty-four for spayed and neutered versus?
Intact.
For people who have for anyone or just for those who are who are have kennels?
Well, that's the other, I guess that's a question that we didn't really consider. There is no kennel licensing. I mean, you have the USDA licensing, but a lot of our members oh, maybe only have two or three dogs. They might have a litter once or twice every eight years, eight to ten years. What it I would have to speak with the kennel club before approaching city council and asking, oh, if we're kennel club members, can we get a discount, something like that? Like, that's not why I'm here today. It's more to ask some of these questions that our membership are asking. But the the big one would be the discrepancy in price.
And then also the?
The age requirement.
The age requirement that you said is that it's larger breeds are eighteen to twenty-four months essentially, and so they have to pay twenty-four versus a twelve dollars. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, we will ask Chief Huff to comment on those after public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kara Stone, and I?
Could you could you read your? There you go. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm tall. And I am one of those folks who doesn't have comment, but more questions as well. And I can email these to you because I am a very curious person. So I saw the estimates for the initial and ongoing infrastructure costs for the program. What are the anticipated approximate labor costs to implement and maintain this over time? Because I know you talked about software and databases, but we're looking at people power, too. And the flip side of that is obviously labor would be saved for certain other things as well. So and then I think my question was answered about students registering their pets as well. So I think we're good there. And you brought forward one of my other questions about service animals. Would there be an exception for those with service animals and or therapy animals? And what would that look like? And then have communities with these ordinances reported unintended consequences, good or otherwise, from implementing similar ordinances? And then how has this program financially impacted comparable cities? Meaning, are there communities able to successfully fund not only the program itself, but also additional funds on top of it that would benefit their animal rescue programs? So and then my last question is, if this were to go into effect, can people pay online? How would the payments be made? The last one was, how can payments be made if this were to be implemented? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean, and I've been a resident here in Ames for over twenty years. And I'm totally against imposing this fine fee, whatever you want to call it. To me, what a person owns is their own personal business. It's not the government's business to to see, oh, hey, what's in your house? What do you own? So one of the questions I have is, you know, is this fee going to be per pet or it's going to be per household? Because some people own multiple pets. The other thing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this fee will only apply towards cats and dogs. So why are cats and dog owners being discriminated against compared to other pet owners? You know, I understand the need for the Ames Animal Shelter and Services. And so I would like to suggest and offer three revenue sources that you could look at doing. One of them would be having a fundraiser or a bake sale to help support these stray You could try to bring in more businesses to this community and tax the businesses. And when you bring in more business, they're going to need workers. Well, if you have more workers, you're going to need housing. So if you have more housing, that that fee could be offset to the property tax through property tax homeowners. And this was brought up earlier, but what about for the individuals that have animals for therapeutic needs, for people that have them for seeing eyed, blind guide dogs? I mean, I don't think it'd be right to discriminate against those individuals. But I think that's my main sources of conflict is, you know, a pet is the pet's owner's responsibility. You can go to the grocery store and see that everything's expensive, from pet food to litter to what have you. And so during these economic difficult times, if you were to implement this fee, what what do low-income individuals do that can't afford this fee? Are they going to abandon these animals? Are they going to dump them off at the Ames Animal Shelter? I mean, that might increase the amount of animals that come into this facility. So I would like to know, you know, other communities that have this PLP, what kind of disadvantages have they seen by them implementing this fee? So those are just some things I hope you would consider.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you for having us up here tonight. I will be maintaining my identity here for the purposes of trying to make this as quick as possible. I got a few points to cover so far as the P L P actually goes. It seems like there's a lot of concern over funding. I can't help but notice.
Could you pull the microphone a little closer to the microphone so we can hear you?
It seems like one of the major concerns here is funding.
Your name, please.
Concerned citizen, we'll go with that. But so far as the funding goes, it seems to me like the city of Ames currently has approximately three million or three hundred million dollars tied up in aquatic centers. Two of those are indoor aquatic centers, which are huge drains on any economy. So maybe if those are either falling apart, not ready for service, maybe we could, you know, relocate some funds from there. Furthermore, seeing as how the animal shelter is supposedly funded through property taxes, and property taxes have just continued to rise, another layer of concern there. Kind of starting to wonder where all these funds are going. Think maybe we should look into that, make sure that they're going to the right places. Points on the P L P. Let's see, the first one here, I'm not entirely sure how it is you plan on having animals reunited with their families more quickly. These microchips don't have GPS in them. So the animal would still have to be located, family would still have to be contacted, and travel would still have to be made. So it's kind of a moot point. It's not really an argument. Let's see, hold times. Now, we could tie that in pretty much with number three, the rabies and the treatment of, you know, any other concerns so far as the animal's carrying. Any responsible pet owner is going to make sure that those things are done. The only thing that this system will end up doing is harming responsible pet owners while empowering those irresponsible pet owners that you are claiming to try to, we'll say, Seems like there's going to be a lot more personal info that's collected and stored within the data centers that are also a major cause for our electric rates going up, especially with the rate deduction plans that these data centers receive at the expense of the consumer, i.e., us, you, me, and the rest of us here. So I don't think adding more to that is is probably a very good idea. I feel like if it's a system that's more or less tapped out until we can enlarge or expand the infrastructure, then maybe we should find alternative methods or means. I would also like to voice my concerns about the strategies so far as the actual implementation goes. To quote here, "The intent of the staff is to encourage voluntary compliance." And you're going to do that through convincing neighbors to turn each other in, effectively turning America, this great country, into the equivalent of North Korea. And I'm here today to tell you, I refuse. I will not. And should you pass this ordinance, I will purposefully purchase a pet for myself and knowingly violate it. It is my right. I agree with the last gentleman that was up here. My property is my property and my responsibility, and I should not have to suffer the responsibility for paying for other people's irresponsibilities. That's just not how it works. I got to take care of myself, so does everybody else. For a little bit of joy here, I went ahead and made a short comic strip that kind of illustrates the problem. You can go ahead and pass those out. And I will leave one right here for anybody else that would like to speak.
Thank you. Anybody else? If you would like, you're welcome to go to the make it easier if you'd like to go there. And I'm sure Chief Huff, you have access to the microphone.
Okay, I'm really nervous.
Sorry. Hey, don't don't be nervous. Just tell us your name and go ahead, and you can start. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, so my name is Jaycee Comrade. I'm actually a local business owner here. I own and operate Street Missers Theater, which is a cat exclusive grooming business. Many of you guys know me, and I talk all the time on social media. So much more brave behind a camera than I am in person. That said, that context really matters here. I'm also clearly very disabled, and that also matters here because when when you also see the positions that I do, I also run a global nonprofit that is entirely about free education for pet owners and also a collective on the back end where we reunite together multiple pet professionals, different fields, veterinarians, pet sitters, across the whole board, including animal shelters and rescue workers. And we turn in turn create real peer-reviewed science literature into actionable policies and products and how we can actually aid things instead of like, you know, punitively punishing people. And so I don't mean that as a dig. I absolutely adore our animal shelter. I work with them professionally. I have amazing experiences with them. I also work very tightly with all of the veterinarians in this area and several pet sitters who are working for me now as I speak. Like, I have actionable data on this as well because we run a lost cat identification system. I literally take in the data of Ames that is not related to the Ames Animal Shelter for every single cat that goes missing and every single I don't do dogs anymore because God, this body can't keep up. They're cool, love them. But also, at the same time, cats' behavior is very different than dog behaviors. It's very species specific. Now, my technical formal background is actually a mouthful. It's an interdisciplinary applied behavioral analyst, which is a lot to say, but at the same time, that means I look at economics, I look at financials, I look at what's happening behind the mental health of patients and and people who are owning pets. I look at all the data and I interpret it and give solutions based off all data. And the resounding thing here, and I saw all the voices online because researcher screenshot them all, got them all loaded, and you know, I've I've listed everything out, and I have a massive proposal coming your way, but it literally is just too much data to get ready. This was too last minute. I honestly was too busy doing all the other things I do to to notice that this was on on the docket. And so when it was pointed out to me, actually, when Tim posted it, which was phenomenal. Thank you so much, Tim, for doing that, it became resoundingly clear that all of the comments, they will echo the things that we heard tonight. But the biggest thing that I can bring to the table, I can tell you all of those things, and they will be in my report backed up with peer-reviewed research, that you can go, I got the receipts, okay? But the one thing that I am seeing here is that there is an astonishing lack of data present. When the response was, what's the data? What do we know what the other cities are doing? And the response was, we don't have that data. I would call baloney on that big time because we have a nationwide, when you start looking at all the analytics, we know these programs are not efficient. They have historically horrendous compliance rates. They drive citizens to not only hide their pets, but creates more fuel, like previous citizen, to report others. So we already have data when we actually analyze it. We also know that when we go and look at research by like the ASPCA, it actually increases the amount of surrendering, which is like exactly opposite of what we're trying to do here. And so there are real equitable ways to do this. I'm not anti-policy. I am anti-policy that doesn't solve the root problem, but I'm not anti-policy here. There could be forms of registration. There could be like, there's a lot of ideas that I've got spinning here, but honestly, it's 2025. We have A I. in our back pockets. Like, you're telling me we can't get a bunch of volunteer coders and sit there and make a free registry system that doesn't affect pay? That's baloney. We can do that.
Could you I'm hearing that you're going to send us a really cool?
Yes. We'll get all the details.
And we love your passion and excitement. You're already over your time, but can you draw your comments or what you want council to note tonight to a close tonight?
Sure.
Well, as I mentioned, if council follows?
Yeah, that's fair. That's really fair. Thank you. I know I can get passionate about it. I think the number one thing here is I don't see representation for animal welfare independent of the shelter. We need a a board that represents a collective effort for veterinarians, groomers, owners, community members to help collect real actionable data and to make policy informed in the nuance of holding what everybody needs and wants and understanding that maybe maybe reporting numbers to the government might scare some people because there's some real fear. We have some bad policy in place currently that's not even being enforced. And so like, that needs to be discussed. I don't think we can make policy. I don't think we can make policy ethically if we're not reviewing what we're currently doing and and bringing the data to it, too. So that's that's really what it all comes down to. All the other points I echo, too.
Great, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
All right, we will close public input. Chief, let's go back through here real quick. Can you comment on any thoughts on fee discrepancy regarding, especially with dogs that are can't be spayed or neutered eighteen, twenty-four months? And also, maybe just comment on the kennels or some there's some information regarding kennels, I believe, in the in the either C I F. or in the ordinance, I believe, that just talked about that they're exempt.
So the discrepancy, the twelve and twenty-four, was definitely on purpose because, again, we're trying to encourage spay and neutering, not necessarily, I don't think we were thinking those in terms of the people that are breeding or kennels. It's more about the average person in Ames who owns pets. Hadn't thought about service or therapy animals. I think it would be reasonable, um, to exempt service and therapy animals potentially from the ordinance, but I think we'd have to do a, a little more thinking on that. Uh, can you pay online? Yes, that's part of the program, Chameleon. Um, so once it's up and running and programmed, then yes, it would be, you could do that online. Uh, there was a question about, is it per pet? Yes. Why dogs and cats? Because that's ninety-five percent of what's in our shelter is dogs and cats. There's not a lot of other, um, animals, whether, we get occasional snakes, lizards, you know, other smaller pets, but predominantly we're dealing with, uh, dogs and cats. And those are the things that get out when they shouldn't. Not sure if I caught everything.
Yeah, there's, um, there was a question about the, the first speaker about large, larger breeds are not supposed to get spayed or, or neutered until eighteen and twenty-four months, so they would tend to be a little bit.
I would have to probably defer to Ron, who's not here right now on that one. And off the top of my head, that's not my area.
I mean, open question, okay. Are there any unattended consequences that you are aware of at cities that passed, uh, licensing that, that you've heard of through your network?
I have not.
Okay. Um, let's see, what's the benefit been to, um, cities for having these fees? comparable cities, like, what, what kind of assistance do they get? Or what kind of assistance are they receiving? I think more or less it's just, you, you talked a little about what the cost that's going to help operate the shelter.
Right. We have to do maybe a little deeper dive on some of these other communities and how, I guess we're really talking about what is the success of the program? Are people generally compliant or not?
And then Jacey talked about, I think several asked about data. I think that, um, there, in a C I F, there is information. Where else, if they, if they have other questions in terms of cost, operation, budget, et cetera, regarding the animal shelter they want to look into, is there a place they can go to to, to get that information? Is there our budget online, would that be helpful?
Yeah, and also our, our, you know, the animal control website and, uh, social media, they do talk a little bit about that. You know, one comment that was made was about fundraising. We do a lot of fundraising, all the time, it's constant. Um, and we do pretty well. We're going to fund four and a half million dollars of the shelter out of fundraising and people that are reaching in their own pockets. And so we do those things, we offer, uh, microchip clinics on a pretty regular basis with a lot of our partners who are, um, we're happy that they're able to donate the cost of the microchips and a lot of times their time. So we're, we're doing a lot of those things already.
And I was just looking regarding the kennel club, one of those that have kennels in the ordinance, I'm just going to read the exception. Um, requirements for licensing dogs and cats do not, do not apply in the following circumstances. Um, the animal has been temporarily housed in a veterinary hospital, an animal grooming shop, an established licensed kennel, or an accredited institution for research. So from a standpoint, there's questions regarding in kennels, that is not required. All right.
Could I actually clear up?
Sure.
One other kind of question.
Yeah, if there's something else I missed, Council, please, please ask, that'd be clear up too.
So I guess something that I heard here was that, um, people are concerned about a pet licensing fee in addition to the property taxes that are already funding the animal shelter. So I guess what I heard from you was that we're expecting an increase in operating costs once our new shelter opens, correct? So we could either choose to fund that by increasing property taxes or by doing a sort of user tax on individuals that own pets by raising funds for this licensing program. But either way, we're going to expect an increase in operating costs that we're going to have to pay for somehow.
Right, there will definitely be an increase in operating costs at the new shelter, there's no doubt about it. Um, looking at this like a user fee is a very good way to look at it. Much like Parks and Recreation is funded through property taxes. If you take a class at Parks and Rec, you pay for the class. Um, so it's kind of that same sort of thought process with this, is that we're hoping to be able to offset property tax increases with potentially this as a user fee.
So then I guess my, my pitch to people would be to kind of look at this, would you rather have all of this as part of property taxes and not pay a pet licensing fee? Or would you rather the pet users pay a licensing fee and the property tax piece doesn't go up in order to fund our shelter operations? I think that is a, a policy question that all of us have to think about too, but it would be helpful to get public input on that question of where should the money come from?
And I want to be clear, I cannot guarantee that the pet licensing program would completely offset any other costs. I can't say that because we, we are not into it yet. But that's really what our hope is, is that they'll, that will make up for, um, the, uh, operating costs in a new shelter.
Okay, so we've, go ahead.
I, I had an item too that I heard that I wanted to clarify.
Please.
Or, um, just address, and that was about the A S P C A's position. According to their website, the A S P C A is in favor of licensed programs for companion animals, um, including those used for breeding shows for work and service. Um, the A S P C A strongly supports fee differentials for intact versus spayed or neutered pets. Um, they say the differential should be sufficient to encourage the surgery. So I, I just want to, you know, I appreciate everybody's thoughts, and I'm certainly in favor of collecting more input on this before we move forward, but I just wanted to, um, address that, that I, I thought I heard someone reference.
Thank you. So we're about forty-five minutes into this, and if Council is supportive of alternative number two, which would allow additional time for feedback, and this will come back to Council for further discussion, um, I would be interested in a motion for alternative two. If you're interested in doing other things or want to discuss this at length, um, we can, but I just don't want to necessarily spend time a night talking through this at, at length and then come back and talk about it again, um, on the sixteenth of, uh, December, which is recommend, which is the city manager's recommendation, so.
Yeah, is there any specific reason that date was picked?
No.
I'm just thinking that's, um, you know, probably around finals for students and maybe holidays for other people, so I might be supportive of, um, an even further back delay to have more time to gather input.
Good. Before a motion's made, I guess what I would ask Council, I mean, not ask you verbally, but to think about is kind of considering where you're at right now and, and what kinds of things would lead you to vote one way or the other. So for me, I'm not really interested in exploring this any further at this time. And, and I don't want to ask staff to go out and do all this work and get all this feedback to only come back in, in two months or whatever, three months, and for the result to be the same. So I think that's just something that we all need to decide individually. And I, I guess I would say if, if you think you're not going to be in support of this, let's not ask staff to go do a lot of work to come to the same result.
Well, if you're interested in making a motion, you can make the motion, then we can discuss it.
Um, one other question, I, I really appreciate, uh, so many people attending tonight's meeting. Uh, there are a lot of people here that I've never seen before, and that makes me really happy that you took some time, you cared about the issue enough to attend. Um, we had, um, five people that spoke, um, all of them in opposition, uh, to some degree. I'm curious of the people here, how many of you, you just raise your hand, would say you're in opposition, just to get a flavor of the, the room? How many of you are opposed to a pet licensing program? So quite a few, okay, thanks.
I'm only here in favor.
Yeah. So a couple, yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's fair. I, I, um, it was interesting, I hadn't thought through this, um, that much, but then all of the feedback that we received on social media, um, and I, I don't know to what degree Council is reading Ames People or Facebook, um, but actually sometimes it's very helpful. There were, um, a lot of perspectives that I hadn't considered, and it, um, it, it moved me to, to your position on this. And so I, I think that people, you know, I don't, I, I think it's valuable to look at what other communities are doing, um, but it's not always determinative. And, uh, I think our community is, is been very clear on this, I don't think they're interested in this, so I, I think, I, I'm not interested either.
Is there a motion? Let's get a motion on the table.
Move alternative two.
Second.
Is, is that, so alternative two is December sixteenth, right?
Yeah.
And we had, it seems like we have a lot of questions where Chief has said maybe we need to dig a little deeper on this, and we've got questions about the differential in, um, treatment for students and L M I individuals other than students and service animals and, and all of those sorts of things.
Maybe a amended, friendly amendment if possible to direct staff to bring back the proposed ordinance to City Council at a later date for a final decision regarding the proposed program. So don't put a December sixteenth timeline on it, but however long we need. Is that acceptable, Anita?
It is, thanks.
All right.
I, so I'm curious, um, uh, Chief, we're going to be seeking, uh, information from the public. And, and could you explain like the steps that we would take to get information from the public?
Actually, Susan would handle that, Susan would handle that question.
While you're coming up, Susan, the, the reason why I'm asking is, when we had the, the proposal to reduce East Lincoln Way from four lanes to three, we had a very large amount of public sentiment. Six hundred and thirty-five people responded to the survey and overwhelmingly opposed to it, and yet this council disregarded that. And, um, I'm curious, um, what our approach is going to be because, uh, I don't want the council to say, well, your survey wasn't representative, or maybe there is a bias against pet licensing. I mean, how are you going to get information that will allow the council to make an informed decision?
Well, if you use the, um, idea of audience for reaching out to people, we've already got a good start because we've been working on a big fundraising effort. So if we look at people, um, like Jeff's example of Parks and Recreation, when you take a class and you pay a user fee for the class, we now have collected information on you, so we know who some of the pet owners are in the community. So let's take the questions to people who own pets. Um, and so maybe it's not necessarily a representative sample because, um, when you look at user fees, you're asking the people who use the service, are they willing to pay for it? And you just make sure that you've reached enough of them to get an even and balanced response.
And, and that seems like a, a very reasonable, thoughtful way to go. Um, would you also be looking at information that's gathered from social media, from Facebook or other sources?
Well, part of the problem with social media is that you don't get the demographics. So we have no idea, uh, if people on, on quote Ames People page are, are from Ames.
Right.
In fact, I see many people that I went to school with who don't live anywhere near Ames on that page. And so for a crowdsourcing, um, option, that's probably not the best. Um, certainly you have people that are willing to share their thoughts, but you would hope that we can collect them in other arenas, that maybe they own pets and we can get them through a database that way. And like I said, we've been doing this outreach to, uh, raise money for the animal shelter. We know that animals are very popular in Ames and that people love them and want, uh, want the best for them. And so, um, you know, um, we want to hear from a, a variety of voices of people who are affected by this.
Yeah, and, and I, so I commend you on that, and I look forward to results. But I'm curious what Council's going to do with this. And you, you were very happy to disregard ample data that we received on East Lincoln Way. If you get four hundred, five hundred people opposed to this, will you ignore that as well? And so tonight, we had five people and they all spoke against it, and the more majority of people that were here tonight spoke against it. I worry about, uh, the, the sort of the tendency to ignore our community with this, so that's my position.
So here's the thing about public feedback, it is just one thing for us to use as we evaluate decisions. We were not elected to give a survey to the community and take, let's say, six hundred people were against East Lincoln Way. The, the percentage of the population that that represents in Ames is so small that I don't think anyone elected us to make decisions based on what less than one percent of the population say they want. We have to take feedback in combination with expertise from staff, outside expertise, scientific data, and so if you look at the East Lincoln Way situation, not only are road diet something that are highly recommended by the Federal Highway Administration and the Iowa D O T, East Lincoln Way was actually recommended for a road diet by the Iowa D O T in twenty seventeen. That was not something that our staff just dreamt up out of the blue. We have to take all of that in combination with the feedback we receive from the public. And sometimes that data outweighs the small amount of negative feedback that we might receive. In this case, we're going to do the same thing. And for me, I've already done research to, to show me that pet licensing programs are not effective in gaining compliance. And so the feedback is important, but it's just one piece of the way that we should be making decisions.
Gloria.
Uh, I, well, I will echo what Amber said, but I also would say that I personally came into this meeting absolutely convinced that we needed a pet licensing program. And I have heard things here that I hadn't considered. The variety of input has contributed to the way I'm looking at this. But now I've got two sides of this issue that are making me want more data and more concrete information from whatever staff can bring to us and from whatever research I might be able to do in light of these discussions that we've had tonight. And for, thank you for the emails, um, we got a lot of emails. But it's, again, it's all going into that hopper, and now I'm not sure where I come down on this.
Okay, I'm cutting off, all right, roll call, please.
Fletcher?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Rollin?
Aye.
Coriary?
Nay.
Garten?
Nay.
John?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I, I have a question, just to be clear, that, that was alternative two.
Certainly.
And then I was just wondering with the outreach stuff for alternative two, if we could contact the Department of Residents with Iowa State and then some of the, the bigger property management companies so that we can get some input from those who might be affected, like the student renters, because they'll have all the data on who has pets in the residence halls and the apartments as well.
Chief?
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
So that was number two, but at a later date and not necessarily December sixteen.
Right. Thank you. I think some of the criteria is they want to make sure that students have the opportunity to be back, so it'd be after winter break, first of all. Secondly is, um, not trying to control staff, but I think it's not wrong, it's, you know, I think I would say it's probably in the first quarter, maybe, or next year, if that's feasible. But I'm not, I'm not, there's, there's no timeline put in the motion, so it's more or less, when you get stuff put together, then come back. And I would anticipate since we're going to be into, heavy into the budget, end of January through first or middle part of February, maybe it won't be until sometime in February. But there's no time limit set on it, all right?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move back up to item number sixteen, Building Energy Audit Report.
All right, good evening, Council. Uh, we're here asking for acceptance of the Building Energy Audit Report. Uh, so I'd like to introduce Cory Melis, our Director for Fleet and Facilities, and then Cory Metzger here from Resource Consulting Engineers, who led the team that conducted the study. Um, so the goal for any energy audit is to baseline your buildings, get a good baseline of your energy use, and then identify all opportunities for savings. So we're looking for So we're looking for energy savings, savings for greenhouse gas emissions, and then savings for costs as well. And hopefully the three of those things align. So we've done that for 16 of our largest city-owned buildings, our biggest energy users. And then in addition to energy efficiency, we have them look at feasibility for solar, rooftop solar at some of our buildings, and then also for electric vehicle charging, so we can prepare for, to continue to transition our fleet to electric vehicles. There's a lot of information in the report and I'll pass it over to Corey to kind of give an overview of their approach and some of the results.
Great. Thank you, Nolan. I'm going to try to cover 232 pages of report in 15 minutes or so, in 20 slides. Please don't hesitate to interrupt me with any questions.
Yeah, actually, what we want to do is we'll go through your entire report, first of all. We find it to be a lot more efficient and then the council can go ahead and ask questions at the end.
Great.
We'll endeavor to try and get it done in 15, 20 minutes.
That sounds good. Okay. Well, as Nolan indicated, we're going to go through the final report from the energy audit process. And we'll try to give you highlights that will help to understand and quickly interpret that document instead of having to read all 232 pages. So please go ahead. So I'd like to quickly recognize the team. We had some great teammates here from the city that helped us. There are a number of folks who are not listed that helped us with individual buildings. A few of our other team members are here with me tonight in the audience. But we had a, a team from Resource Consulting Engineers, Scott Jasper, who's an Ames resident, is sitting behind me. Rebecca Riss from OPN is also here. And then Joe Logan, another Ames resident, was the lead from Willdan. And I'll go through the roles that those individuals played on the project here.
Sir, sir, could you, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name when you started.
Oh, apologies. I'm Corey Metzger, Resource Consulting Engineers. Okay, so first of all, with respect to the process, I'd like to commend the, the city for your foresight in thinking about what you're going to do with your facilities ahead of time. Certainly, we see frequent decisions made when, when you don't have options. And by taking this step, it, it puts you in a position to make good decisions moving forward. So our process consisted of a number of steps. We started with document collection. We gathered drawings and other information on the 16 facilities that we were looking at. After getting that information and trying to interpret it, we visited each of those facilities, had a walkthrough with the staff that take care of those facilities, and they provided invaluable information for each of those to, to allow us to better understand how they operate and what issues they were facing. Based on the information from the visits and the documents that we had reviewed, we were able to develop proposed energy efficiency measure strategies. And we'll talk about those more in, in a little bit. But those then were used in the process of analyzing, analyzing building energy. And we'll talk about that in more detail as well. We have a section on, or looked at photovoltaics, as Nolan mentioned, for five of the facilities. And then we also looked at EV charging feasibility for 15 out of 16 facilities. Based on that, we took all the information that we obtained and put it into that exciting report. And if you need help going to sleep, I'm sure that you can read that some, some evening. So we can go on to the next page. So the order of the report is the executive summary and followed by individual building reports for all 16 facilities, the photovoltaic feasibility assessment, the EV charging feasibility assessment, and then a benchmarking comparison at the end of the document. And we can move on. Great. So key item to be aware of is that we took different analysis strategies for different facilities. For larger and more complex facilities, we used detailed energy modeling that allowed us to get a calibrated energy model that we could then make better decisions on with respect to considering the energy efficiency measures that we were looking at for those facilities. For some of the smaller to midsize facilities, we used benchmarking, which allowed us to take a, a large database that the Willdan team has developed and look at performance of those facilities compared to similar facilities around the country and quickly analyze improvements. That allowed us to be efficient with city dollars, not spending more time and effort than maybe would be useful for considering those strategies. And then for our third group, we looked at manual calculations. And those were facilities that had more unique operating conditions or processes. So Furman Aquatic Center, the ICE Arena, Water Plant, thank you, Water Treatment Plant, and Cyry. Okay, so just quickly, the map on the right side of the screen shows you the, the facilities with corresponding numbers. And then you can see as far as detailed energy modeling, benchmarking, and manual calculations, which facilities we looked at. We are going to go through a sample, just one facility, to see what the report looks like. And we're going to focus on City Hall for that, which you can see was done with detailed energy modeling. But I'm happy when we get to questions, to answer questions on any others if helpful. Okay, so as I mentioned, the first portion of the report is the executive summary. There are a couple of things that we're highlighting here that I think will be useful. So in the executive summary, there's a table that identifies the total potential savings across all of the facilities. A few key items to look at here, you'll see there is an electric consumption column, a natural gas consumption column. These are in potential annual savings, energy cost column, and then emissions savings. And that's in equivalent kilograms of carbon dioxide per year. On the far right, you'll see the energy efficiency measures that are included in this table. But the key takeaways are at the bottom there, the potential savings that you could achieve in electric consumption, natural gas consumption, and energy costs and emissions. I think it's important to note, and you'll see this throughout the report, there are cases where a facility may show an increase in electric consumption but a decrease in natural gas. That's as we shift the energy consumption from fossil fuels towards electrification. So we can move on. So then in the executive summary, sorry, Corey, I didn't mention I put animations in here. Oh, the, the table we just looked at is also represented in some graphs. You'll see annual net energy use reductions, energy cost reductions, which are slightly different because of the different fuel mix that we're looking at, and then carbon emissions reductions. And so these are presented as the entirety of all of, to match the table that we just looked at. But there are also similar charts for each building. Okay, so with respect to individual buildings, the report is broken down into a facility description, notable conditions that we observed during our walkthroughs, a utility bill analysis, benchmarking where it's applicable. There are a few facilities that didn't make sense for benchmarking because of their unique operations. Energy analysis, whatever the, whether it was detailed modeling, benchmarking, or manual calculations. Energy efficiency measures, and there's an asterisk there because I wanted to highlight that we do include some energy efficiency measures that don't actually save energy. When we saw something that we thought might not meet code or, or needed to be considered to improve the health or safety of the building, we included it where appropriate, even if it didn't save energy. And then there are appendices in, in select building types, particularly those that have the detailed energy modeling. So as I mentioned, we're going to walk through the City Hall report and I'm going to do this quickly, but we can certainly come back to these pages as, as it's helpful. So there's a facility description that covers general building characteristics. And then a more detailed description that's broken down by systems that talks about building envelope, lighting, HVAC, and plumbing systems with descriptions of each of those and some photos typically. Go to the... Then we have notable conditions observed. And those notable conditions are typically something that we saw that we felt like impacted our, our ideas for energy efficiency measures or something that may be necessary to consider for the facility, even if it's not included as part of the additional analysis that went into the energy efficiency measures. Okay. So the utility bill analysis breaks down the information that we were able to bring in from data that the city's team already had well, very well organized and actually linked in very nicely with, with the analysis that we were working on. So for each building, you can see annual energy data by fuel type, broken down by month. You can see cost and energy use intensity or EUI. And then carbon emissions as well. So this should be included for each of the facilities. For most of the facilities, we included a benchmarking comparison so that you can see where this facility would compare for typical facility types across the database that Willdan had available. That can give you a good idea of where, where opportunities are as far as the building as a whole for energy efficiency improvements. And then for a number of the buildings, we've got a breakdown by end use for energy consumption. So you'll see that chart on the right gives you an idea based on, in, in the case of the detailed models, the calibrated model. We don't have metering by end use in the buildings, but that calibrated model was matched to the energy consumption for the facility. So we can see approximately what we expect each end use is using. Okay, so with all of that information put together in our walkthroughs, we developed some energy efficiency measures for each building. Those are listed out here with a description. Each of those is then put into further consideration for the energy analysis. And we'll get to that on the next page. But the table on the lower right, we'll zoom in on actually in a couple of slides. So I'll get into more detail on that and we can talk through it more in question and answer if it's helpful. All right, so that previous table and the table on this page will both be covered in more detail. But it looks at the different energy efficiency measures and provides feedback on those measures. And then below the table on the left here, you'll see estimated savings for energy efficiency measure bundles. And to the right, you'll see graphs that match those. This takes those individual measures, which can't necessarily be added directly, and, and shows what the results of combining them would be through the modeling process. So you can see, if you're interested in one mechanical system strategy with an envelope strategy, what the, what the end result might be. Okay. So as I mentioned, we're going to zoom in a little bit on that first table that we looked at. This table has information on costs that's expected for each of the energy efficiency measures that's laid out. So we're trying to give you an idea of the baseline scenario for cost. And in some cases, there's a significant cost in that column. In other cases, the cost is zero because there isn't, the baseline requirement is nothing. If the baseline scenario is for City Hall, for example, there will be a point in the next five years or so that you probably need to consider an HVAC system retrofit. There's a meaningful cost there to start. So we're looking at incremental cost then in the, in the right two columns. We did look at potential rebates where they were available as well, which is in the, the column preceding the incremental cost columns. And then the next table takes that information into account and looks at the energy performance that we developed from our calculations. So you can see where the annual savings are for energy consumption, whether it's electricity or gas, cost and emissions reductions. And then towards the right side of the table, you'll see some key columns that I think are probably most useful for you as you, as you look through this document. The incremental cost per, excuse me, per unit of equivalent CO2 emissions saved and the average simple payback. So you'll see typically a number for the payback there. And then the final column has a recommendation for implementation. So we're looking at, does it make sense to do something as soon as possible? Should you wait until the end of the expected useful life for the equipment? Or is there, is there something else we need to consider in that column? And that's, these tables are in the document for, for all of the facilities. Okay, so I probably jumped ahead a little too far on the previous page, but this slide again talks about the combined bundles and shows them in, in a slightly larger scale so that you can maybe read them a little more easily. But the idea here is we wanted to provide, to the extent possible, and understanding what it would look like if you were to combine strategies. Because certainly in some facilities, City Hall, for example, if, if you're doing one major project, there may be efficiency to do multiple projects at the same time. And I believe there's one more slide. Yes, so, and there's the animation, exciting animation on this one. Okay, so we wanted to cover the fact that for a number of buildings, you're going to see strategies that are listed that don't show a simple payback. And those strategies are included intentionally. A good example would be the heat pump water heater, which you're going to see on a number of facilities. The reason that does not have a payback right now is because there is infrastructure required to switch from a natural gas-fired water heater to an electric heat pump water heater. So we're including the cost for the electrical work that goes with that. That would be a one-time cost to switch from natural gas to electric. We wanted to include that with the report and make sure that it was clear that that's not, we're, we're not trying to exclude any costs, but also don't want you to think that we were unaware of the, the implications of, of those strategies. So we certainly think there's value in considering them as long as they're being looked at in the right way and understood, standing that there is savings once you switch from gas to electric. You can get that payback, but you won't get it on the initial changeover. So wanted to highlight that because there are a number of, of strategies that are included that look like that. And I believe that is the last slide. Happy to entertain any questions or comments or...
Thank you. Questions?
So could we go back one slide? I just want to understand how to interpret these negative numbers that we see with the Ames Public Library? Because I think this is a library table. And we've got other negative numbers in that initial executive summary table.
Yep.
So to me, that says, if we make this change, we're going to increase kilowatt hours by 8,600? Am I reading that right?
That's correct. So right now you have a natural gas-fired water heater. So what you really need to, and that, that's a great question. If you look at the kilowatt hours and thermes columns, you're typically going to see different values. One's going to be positive and one's negative if we're switching from a gas-fired system to an electric system. So in the, in this case, this is for City Hall.
No, that's, that's the library.
I'm sorry.
1940 window replacement, that's the library.
Yep, apologies. So we are looking at, currently, the library has an air-cooled chiller and we recommend, and natural gas-fired boilers. So the top line for EEM, number one, would shift most of your heating load to air-to-water heat pumps away from natural gas-fired boilers. So you do have a significant increase in electricity consumption throughout the year, paired with a significant decrease in natural gas usage. So the actual, and, and I didn't point this out earlier, the emissions rates that we're using for natural gas and electric are a standard number for natural gas and a utility provided value from Ames Electric for the electric emissions. So what you see is a net reduction for the facility in emissions of 31,274 kilograms of equivalent CO2 per year. But you do have a significant increase in electrical consumption because you're shifting from natural gas to an electric.
But the electric then is, is going to reduce the CO2 emissions.
Correct. Yes, so, and I can, I don't want to be too boring, but we can improve efficiency.
Okay.
In the way that it operates.
I know we're going to have a lot more time with this report.
Sure.
Don't think I'm not interested, folks. I, I'm interested, but...
Other questions?
Corey, could you give us sort of a, a big picture perspective on how your modeling has borne out when changes have been implemented? So have, there have been efforts to, when you take this data and the, and the approach you're using, and then there have been efforts then to implement changes to improve the energy efficiency of buildings. Have you gone back then to compare the, the status, once the changes were implemented, against the modeling that was done?
That's a great question. Mike, do you mind coming up? If you don't mind, I'd like to have Joel Logan take that question because the Will Dan Joel is the project manager for Will Dan, who's part of our team. And his modeling experience dwarfs mine.
So we find the energy models and analyses are most helpful in comparing different options. Certainly a big factor in any savings is how things are operated. So we are trying to we for all of these looked at the current operations and tried to take that into fact to account. If operations change, that would change the results. So A facility that is used extensively now that is used less in the future. The savings could be even more. The opposite could be happen if a building is used more in the future, you might not see the savings that You would expect from the report because now we're using the build more.
So is the answer to my question no?
That Well, the answer to your question is yes, we do go back and see That the savings are achieved.
And and I am I trying to be difficult? This is a non
Are you trying to ask like as we go forward? Knowing we have these models and we could update them.
Nothing's been implemented yet.
No, I I understand it. So My my question is really sort of fundamental as I as I look at this model and your technique, I don't have the horsepower to understand it. So I'm asking a very fundamental question. I presume that there have been efforts to to test your model By implementing proposed changes and then ask the question, how close was the model? So in other words, if the model Projected X amount of savings. When those changes were made, Did the model bear out the the proposed savings? That's my question is has has this approach To modeling actually been Compared with implementation? That's my question.
Yes, yes, it has.
All right. And So that that provides us a greater sense of reliability if 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 that is in fact the case, and I I just want to make sure that that's happened. And so Can you help us? And maybe you can pick one of these examples. When we came out of the Climate Action Plan, our goal Was to think about projects on a case by case basis and try to understand the cost benefit analysis. So We we put in so many taxpayer dollars and we get so much benefit. Can you give us an example and apologize if this is like right in here, but I tried to find this. Where it would help us to see sort of the cost benefit of those investments?
I think that the general And I meant to highlight this and didn't. So I apologize for that. But the The two columns towards the right of the screen that have the simple payback and the incremental cost Per unit emissions saved are the columns that I would look at as you're trying to consider the Return on investment for your for any project that you're considering. So With respect to the incremental cost, you want to look at the lowest value there? That means you're spending the least amount to achieve savings on the You're spending the lowest amount to a C to achieve the savings for the emissions that you're looking at, right? So the lower the number is there, the better. And the same is going to be true with simple payback. We want to look for the lowest value you can achieve. Now, I do think it's important to note that for some of the Projects that we're talking about here. Or that are included City Hall HVAC retrofit, for example. There are some strategies that we excluded initially intentionally because we weren't sure how they would pan out. Strategy one A there would be looking at using a geothermal system for the billing. Which we have not vetted with the D N R, not certain that it would be viable, but there was a federal Incentive that we were concerned might go away. That incentive has survived. And so there is a significant Incentive for one A that is not included in the analysis here That the city might be able to pursue. So for any of those more significant projects, we certainly encourage you to Look at them at a deeper level than than what is included in this document.
So can you can you just walk us through just even one of those to help us? Like to be able to say this is the cost benefit analysis. I apologize. I'm still lost on this.
Yeah, that So for one A and one B, they're both options to improve the HVAC system for this building. The previous table included the do you mind? Thanks. So these two tables will work well together. There's too much information to get them in one table to fit nicely in the document, which is why they're split. But you can see that the baseline scenario cost for both one A and one B would be four point five million dollars. For one A, there is a utility rebate that we anticipate would be about eighty four thousand dollars. So your total cost, your total incremental cost over that four point five million dollar number for one A Is somewhere in the range of one point two to one point seven million dollars. For one B, it's four hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand dollars. So again, we're not accounting for that potential federal Funding that you could get for one A. But if we go then to the next page, You can see the Expected annual savings in kilowatt hours and terms and and the terms are relatively limited here. But In energy cost, one A certainly has an advantage in your annual savings, but there's a significantly lower investment. So what that results in Is under the incremental cost per unit of emissions saved. A much lower number for one B than for one A. So your your incremental cost Was much lower. Your emission savings aren't as good, right? We're not. We're not saving four hundred thousand Kilograms of equivalent CO2 a year. We're saving three hundred thirteen thousand. But you're doing it for a lower investment. And so you can see that instead of twenty cents to twenty eight cents per Kilogram of equivalent CO2 saved, you're spending ten to twenty cents Is the estimated range and your simple payback Is twelve years instead of nineteen and a half years.
And would you clarify the simple payback is on? What?
That is on the energy savings related to the incremental cost.
So on the other chart, if you go back one, It's on those last two columns.
Correct.
It's not on a total project.
Right. It's assuming so. Assuming if there's a baseline scenario cost listed, it's not on on that. It's based on the incremental cost. We're assuming that something had to happen. The incremental cost if the baseline scenario cost was zero is the total cost.
So the point is that that's why it just shows that is you you got to make sure this is basically totally worn out.
Absolutely.
Because if you take that base cost plus incremental cost. And you say, well, we're going to save a bunch of money. Well, the point is you'll save some money, but your payback will zoom into the twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years.
Right. You you don't get a payback on a retrofit. You're doing the work because your systems have reached the end of their useful life.
So this is very helpful. Sometimes we'll say around days that As we think about investments in climate matters, we we can't afford not to do these things because Of the environmental impact. And I I think that's misguided. But I'm strongly in favor of supporting Climate measures that actually makes sense that there is a meaningful Dollar, you know, some kind of a payback for the investment that we're making. And Then this is all looking at our existing Inventory of buildings. Is there a way in which this kind of methodology is helpful at new constructions? We're going to build a new fire station. There'll be Maybe a new field house at some point. And so Are the things that we're learning from our existing buildings Of value as we look prospectively towards new construction?
I think that a number of the strategies that we've looked at as energy efficiency measures for your existing facilities could be considered for strategies in your new buildings, but I Not here to tell the the teams that are working on those facilities how to do their jobs. I will say that and I'm also not here to sell any services. But part of the reason that we When we assembled the team, we reached out to Will Dan because we work with them typically in a different capacity as as they Operate the rebate programs for both Mid American and Alliance Energy. And they do that. We had a meeting this morning for a retrofit project we're working on for a school in Ankeny where We go through and they help us look at different strategies to consider What potential benefits we can achieve there. So I'm I'm not sure if that
No, that's that's spot on because My fear is that we just throw money And say this is climate and we throw money at something without really understanding the cost benefit analysis for that. So we're spending one point two, four, five million dollars on a new firehouse. We really don't know what the the energy benefit, the the climate benefit would be. I I wish that I could be supportive of those things, but I think that if it sounds like This is the kind of thing that would help bring me along to understand The benefit of taking taxpayer dollars and putting them towards those things if we can understand The the benefit for the environment. Thanks for those answers.
Rachel, any questions tonight? Amber? Nina?
One more.
Go ahead.
When we're looking at the I guess it's probably the incremental cost CO2 emissions saved. And we consider Window replacement or anything else that involves demolition. I'm assuming that the CO2 produced by the disposal of these items is not calculated in there. Is that right?
I I think it's fair to say that we're looking at operational equivalent carbon and not embodied carbon in these analyses. And the the intent is not to exclude that. It's More considering the fact, and as you'll see in many of our recommendations, it's to replace the equivalent at the end of its useful life. We don't want to see you take a A five year old piece of equipment and take it out of service because The embodied carbon in that device That you're going to take out will dwarf potentially the savings that you can achieve. So Our our intent is to make sure that we're making good decisions for your buildings long term. So We don't have that accounted for, but we are looking typically at Components that have Met or in many cases long exceeded their expected useful lives.
Ramon, any questions?
No, none for me. Thank you.
Okay. All right. First of all, thank you for the thorough report. It was I think I read about a third of it, scanned rest of it, but I didn't fall asleep. But anyway.
Where's the report housed?
It was attached.
Attached to the council action form.
Right. I understand that.
Oh, sure.
My my question is if someone wanted to read this, could how would they find this on our city website?
We'll post it to the sustainability page.
Great. Thank you.
Could you and like just a couple of sentences as you wrap up, what's your What's the the state of the building conditions as you looked at everything? And what would be the biggest? What would you focus on to really help impact to do have the biggest impact in your opinion? In terms of energy savings, carbon reduction?
Sure. I think state of your buildings overall is good. I mean, It's clear that the city is taking good care of the buildings. There are several that are Older or Are nearing the point where they're going to need significant work. From my perspective, the the biggest thing you can do to help To help yourselves be successful is to have planning done early, which this This provides a roadmap for that planning, but Things like water heater replacements, if you do decide that it's appropriate to look at heat pump water heaters in a number of facilities. You don't want to do that on an emergency replacement basis. You don't have to replace the water heater early, but you may want to put an electrical circuit in place that can serve that heat pump water heater ahead of time. So that when the time comes, It's an easy swap. You don't. You aren't painted into a corner of saying we have to do another gas water heater that's not going to be here for another ten or fifteen years. So I think Additional planning with these strategies in mind is probably the best thing you can do to help move things forward and then You know, thoughtful consideration on on some of the more significant projects and looking at that and understanding What makes the most sense for the city would those would be the key things I would recommend.
Thanks, Corey. Noah and Corey, next steps? Going to follow what he just talked about?
Yeah, what I call what Corey mentioned, our capital planning process is coming up. So I'd encourage departments to look at their buildings and And consider not just what to do in the near term, but also in the long term, considering where Where the the health of their equipment is.
Very good. Entertained motion accept attached City of Ames Energy Audit Report.
So moved.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed abstaining. Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all who participated for coming and we're going to move on. In light of the the time I've Going to move item number seventeen, the presentation of resident satisfaction survey down. A few items will go right into item eighteen, Fitch Family Indoor Aquatic Center Monthly Update.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We're going to give you an overview of what's been happening with the Fitch Family Indoor Aquatic Center since the last time. Month ago or a couple of months ago. So I'm going to have, thinking just for anybody watching at home. We have Brad Rodenberg from RDG on finding design and also Troy Turner from Story Construction. Who is our construction manager. Brad and RDG is the architect on the project. Brad's going to kind of walk you through Series of slides. But one thing that I do just want to mention, I know one of the things that they will talk about is the The appearance of the the south facing wall Of the of the aquatic center. There are some discoloration unevenness and so on. So just want to let you know that I have had conversations with Brad and Troy and their teams and have asked for them to to bring forward by November sixth Recommendations. So they will have, you know, some Conversation with the the contractor for that bid package. And they'll bring recommendations to us to consider by November sixth. And the goal is to hopefully we can have a solution in place by by mid December. So just wanted to mention that, but you know, you may have some other questions which you'd be able to to ask them when they go through. So I'll turn it over to to Brad and start rifling through these.
That's right. Thanks, Keith. So Images obviously meant to provide an update. We'll start with some drone images. This is a A photo that captures the north parking lot. You can start to see just the progress of construction really pretty exciting. Looking towards the southeast. Permeable pavers not yet in place, but you can see The building is obviously enclosed. And plantings are are fairly far along based on the the time of year. So story construction and contractors have phased that work accordingly.
Yeah, I'll just mention I was out there this afternoon and all the pavers were delivered. While I was out there. So hopefully those will get put in in the in the next few days.
It's a very similar system as as what y'all have here at City Hall. This shows the east elevation. You can see the precast walls there. Directly in interior of those walls is the walking track itself. You see the east entrance into the the parking lot as well. So final grades Coming up to where they need to be. So really starting to take shape. This is a south elevation. You could still see temporary wood enclosures where there will be glass into the Natorium pool space specifically signage is in place. Really striking as you move along Lincoln Way and the presence there Fill in that full site from east to west. Really gives a building presence on on Lincoln Way itself. Uh, this is contractors templating the exterior signage, putting in place there at the south elevation. You can see a little bit of that appearance as it relates to the precast. So working with contractors On potential fixes, just really digging into that, what that is related to precast itself. what that is, uh, related to precast itself. Uh, that, that signage does have internal lighting, um, so it will essentially glow, uh, backlit at night. Um, again, really emphasizing the presence of that new building along Lincoln Way. There it is, finished product, um, Fitch Family Indoor Aquatic Center, of course. Uh, I think the scale is, is right for that south facade. Again, you can see the, the plywood there at the bottom left, uh, will be glass and have that visibility into, into the natatorium space as well. Uh, jumping into the interior of the building, kind of jumping around, but, um, you can see the excavation is currently underway, finishing the, the rec pool, which is in between the lap pool at the left and the wellness pool, uh, to the right there. So essentially the contractor's kind of backing its way out of the building, um, as a release of construction. This is an image, uh, you can see the lap pool, um, fairly complete as it relates to the concrete of the tank itself. Um, you start to see the, the pool deck in between the lap pool and the, the rec pool as well, just a lot as it relates to getting that thing built, um, and having it hold water. So you start to see the, the, how, how we brought concrete into the building with, uh, pump trucks and, you know, almost a hundred-foot plus arm that is getting that concrete to where it needs to be. Um, this is a zero entry, uh, essentially into that rec pool, um, itself. You can see entry, entries into locker rooms as well. Uh, this is kind of a detailed shot of the wellness pool. Uh, we have a bench that would be, will be underwater, um, and a lot of jets kind of at, at your back as you sit there. Uh, another detailed image of that wellness pool as well. You can see the, the pool deck, um, room finish, the line in the middle there is, is the trench drain on the deck itself. So trying to capture the water as it, as it gets up onto the deck. And just so many things that, that story and the contractors have done to protect that construction in place during construction. Um, so the pool deck here at the lap pool, um, you can see how they have done that. Again, the temporary plywood in the background that, um, eventually will be, will be glassed out to Lincoln Way. Some more detailed shots as it relates to the overall building, uh, mechanical space. So pouring concrete pads that help that equipment sit, sit on that, um, floor specifically, Again, boilers that, uh, provide all the hot, hot water for the building itself. Um, a lot that goes into a space like that as far as planning and, and making sure that city folks can still get in there and work and, and manage that equipment. Detailed shot of, uh, the pool mechanical space, um, guardrails going in place for, uh, some of the pumps that sit down in the pits. Um, and then you can see some of the filtration systems there in the background in, in the blue color. Uh, this is an interior shot looking out of the main north entry. So you can see, uh, exterior curtain wall, aluminum, uh, black framing, glass will slide into that. And then the openings at the vestibule there, uh, will also be, uh, glazing with doors as well.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that, um, it's really fun to go over there because this picture was just taken, you know, well, it says the, the 18th, um, but, uh, uh, this is kind of what it was looking like, a little bit like last, uh, last week. Um, I was over there today and all the doors are in and, and everything. So it's really neat to see the progress from day to day to day. Lot of painting going on right now too, which is, uh, which is really neat to see.
Yeah, construction happens quicker if you're not around it each and every day. Um, speaking of painting, probably 75, 80 gallons of paint sitting there on the, on the pallet, ready to go up in the facility. So this image is walking in the main north entrance, looking to the east. So you can see that track, uh, the multipurpose, multipurpose spaces, uh, in, in the middle of that track there too. Again, this is looking south if you were walking on that track. So to the left is your multipurpose rooms, um, to your right, party rooms that have entrances, uh, into the pool natatorium space itself. This is kind of a, a before image of the one we were just looking at. So, uh, pre-painting, so finishing drywall. Um, and then that previous image is that same corridor painted. Uh, some more exterior images. This is the southeast corner, um, of that track space. So, uh, contractors installing curtain wall, trying to get that building enclosed, um, as we work towards final grades around the building. And this is an exterior shot of, of that south curtain wall. So you can envision this as all glass or glazing with a, a frit pattern. People walking by, um, can view into that, that pool space itself. Uh, this is the main entry at the north. So you can see the bollards that are in place just for vehicular reasons, um, and how that, the entrance, which will have aluminum composite panels around that main entry, that now has doors and not plywood. Uh, this is a, uh, in-progress image of our surface bioretention cell. Um, so many different layers as it relates to, to what that does and how it treats water from, uh, running off our parking lot. I think the next image shows that brought up to appropriate grades to be able to handle the appropriate volume of water coming off that parking lot. And again, uh, a lot of the plantings in process, uh, to make sure that we're, we're doing that before it gets too cold out. Parking lot islands, trees that will someday be 30-foot tall. I think this might be our last image of, um, that south precast that, uh, Keith spoke, spoke to, uh, initially with that signage and, um, really keeping to work with, keeping working with Troy and a number of contractors as it relates to expectations of, of final finish and so on and so forth. So it's really starting to come together. I think when we meet next January, maybe, uh, we'll be, we'll be ready to hopefully open a place in weeks after, a month, maybe a month after that. Troy's shaking and said yes.
Questions?
So what is the projected ribbon cutting or opening of the building? Is that coming to focus?
So substantial completion right now is January 20th. Um, we'll hopefully, at that time, we'll get to move in, bring all of our equipment in, start, uh, training staff. Hopefully, um, we've been saying, you know, spring of 2026, hopefully sometime in March we'd be able to, um, to open up. It would, would be the plan for right now.
Good.
Other questions?
I don't want to get into the solutions, but what was the design intent for the south or actually the exterior precast in terms of uniformity of color and what, what was specified and what was envisioned?
Yeah, so from an exterior precast standpoint, we have, uh, two different colors essentially. So we have a darker band along the base and underneath the windows. Um, but all the precast was integral, the color is integral to the mix. So, um, with the thought that we wouldn't have to come back and apply a penetrating stain that would have to reoccur or happen every 10 or 15 years, um, so the precast would essentially speak for itself as it relates to, uh, the color within it. And that color is, uh, based on samples and some other things that were provided. It's supposed to be pretty uniform as it relates to, um, what that looks like from the surface. So working through if there's, uh, form liner released still on the panels, a number of other things that, that could be, uh, needing to be cleaned off from that standpoint too. So working through solutions and, and testing and, and to get it to where the, the gray precast looks very similar from a uniformity standpoint than, uh, the darker colored precast, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so is it meant to be a buff or a, or gray color? If you're intent on?
It's like a light gray. Yep. Yep. And you can see the precast to the, to the right there at the one-story addition.
Yeah.
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 So do you have a sense of how, how the, the concrete could have been, uh, installed without noticing the concern with the color? How did that happen?
Yeah, so I think sometimes material, when it goes in place, um, it reacts to, once it's up, it reacts to sunlight and it reacts to different types of weather, um, especially as it relates to precast. So, um, uh, we, we were working through that as it relates to having that precast up for a certain period of time. There's a number of steps that we knew we had to go through as far as, uh, pressure wash, acid wash. So we're trying to, uh, confirm that the acid wash was what it needed to be from a solution standpoint. Um, so we, does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, so I, this makes me feel even more ignorant. So what you're saying is there was nothing, um, to bring anyone's attention to this concern when, uh, the precast was installed and it was something that, uh, was discovered after it was installed that as, as over time, this discolor, I don't, I don't use discoloration, but this is variation, the color, uh, became apparent. Is, is, am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So did you say that that was acid washed?
It has been.
It's actually detergent. So it's not acid on site, no. No. It's actually a detergent power washing that happens.
So really, I understand is this really appeared after it was pressure washed.
Yeah, yeah. I would say, you know, when the precast showed up on the trucks, there wasn't anything that made people think, oh, there's an issue here. And, and when it comes on the truck, it's not a finished product yet. So they're, get it installed and then several months after the installation, then it was power washed with detergent. And there was some thought like that, well, maybe that'll, uh, take care of any issues that, uh, we see, but it did not. One, one clarification to, um, the red, I'll say it's red, precast, that was acid etched in the plant. So there are two different finishes there. So the red is acid etched in the production plant. The precast in question is a smooth finish that was an acid etched in the plant?
The reason I reacted was that acid washing over anodized aluminum basically will produce ruined aluminum finish.
Uh, yeah, it will etch everything it touches, aluminum, glass.
Yes.
Yep. Yep, no.
All right. All right. Ramon, any questions?
No, none for me. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to share, Keith? Very good to go.
No, it's, uh, I will just mention that, uh, we are going to be doing another tour, um, coming up in the next few weeks with, uh, with the Parks and Recreation Commission. So when we get that date set, we'll send it out to all of you and also into the County Board of Supervisors are interested in, in joining us as well. So, um, so we'll get you some information, uh, on that. And, and for those of you that were there the last time, you'll be amazed at, uh, at how much progress, um, has been done.
So just for point of clarification, so a identification of what caused the issue and what is going to be done to rectify it is to you by the 6th of November, is that correct?
Correct.
For the intent of being included in the council packet for the 11th? I don't know. Actually, we don't meet until the 18th.
Yeah, it would, uh, well, the next, the next, uh, report would be, we usually would do the 25th, but if council would like us to, to, to give, uh, um, something earlier, we could easily do that.
No, I was just trying to clarify, I heard a date of November 6th, you're going to get information in terms of solutions. I just didn't know if that's coming to council or just staying internal at the staff level.
No, I think what, this, the way these work out, we probably have to need council direction if we don't have a perfect solution to it. I think it depends on what it is, but, um...
I'm just mindful, just mindful of the fact that, news flash, it won't still be 50 or 60 degrees for a significantly long period of time and didn't know if it's temperature or weather dependent.
Yep. So, so yeah, they'll get it, uh, get something to us by the 6th and, and we can always, uh, update council after that.
All right. All right, entertained motion to, uh, approve the Fitch Family Indoor Aquatic Center Monthly Update.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
All right, thank you much. Have a great night.
All right, move on. Number 19, major site development plan, PUD overlay, 3200 University Boulevard, Benjamin. Good evening.
The, uh, application before us this evening is for the major site development plan at 3200 University Boulevard. Um, you may remember end of last year, um, this site and the site to the south of it, 3300 came before us for rezoning. It was rezoned from Research Industrial Park to FSRM, both sites with, um, PUDs. At the time, we, um, council approved a major site development plan for 3300, um, with a master plan for 3200, um, which was intended to be a placeholder, um, so that, um, the developer could come back, uh, at a later date with the major site development plan outlining all the details. The proposal for, uh, 3200, um, it's a six-acre site and is intended to have 74 residential units on it. Um, there are four apartment buildings, two with 12 units, two with 18 units, and then seven duplexes for 14 units in the pole of this, uh, flag lot. Um, the, when 33 and 3200, um, were rezoned, staff worked extensively with the, um, developer and with the developer's, uh, engineer to create the entrance that you see there just south of 3200. Um, it's coming off of the traffic circle there at University Boulevard and, uh, Cottonwood Road so that there's one access point for both developments and then also for the Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor, um, which is a county park even though it is, uh, within the City of Ames limits. So the entrance there straddles the line between the county park and the, um, the private properties. Um, and I should add that these, um, residential properties, um, were not, were not, um, subtracted from or taken away from the park. They were always intended to be, um, private developments. They just have not been, um, developed until, um, starting at the beginning of this year when, uh, 3300, um, began to go vertical. You can see there as well, along the, um, the shared property line between, uh, this property and the park property is the access road. To the south there is, um, shown in a dashed line is a parking lot and a shelter. Those are very much meant to be placeholders. Um, we are currently in the midst of talking to the county about, um, uh, building that parking, proposed parking lot and the accompanying shelter. It won't look exactly like what you're seeing there. That is just, um, there to, um, you know, as a placeholder. Um, the, uh, at the time of the, uh, initial development, um, staff did work with the developer on the, um, architecture as well for both 33 and 3200. Um, it was designed to be, um, in a style that is complementary to the research park. And I've got some of the elevation drawings here. Um, you can see these are the townhomes. Um, the front of the townhome that will face the park is there in the upper left. This is the 12-unit building and this is the 18-unit building. And then... left. This is the 12-unit building and this is the 18-unit building. And then these are what the garages will look like. So very similar style, if you remember from what the 3300 buildings look like. Going back to the site plan, there will be garages as well for, that will serve the apartment buildings. There are five garages there. The applicant is intending to put all of the residential units onto individual lots. And there's a preliminary plat that's right after this, where I'll talk a little bit more about that. The, this is a planned unit development, a PUD, and so that does allow for certain design flexibility. One of those things is the, having the, some of the required parking for the residential unit, for the apartment buildings on a separate lot. Staff did work with the applicant to develop a landscaping plan as well. The park does abut this property to the southeast there and to the east. And the applicant is going to be putting some native grasses that will blend with those grasses that are in the park. There will be parking lot trees as well for parking lot shading. And because this development has over 50 units, the PUD ordinance does require this development to have an amenity. So right there in the center, there's a, a large garage just to the south of that. In that little kind of triangular space is a, a picnic shelter. The deviations for this site that are allowed for in the PUD include that this will be, the lots will be accessed off of a private street. The private street will be built to city standards. It'll be a 26-foot wide street and will be built to the same thickness and will be engineered in the way that a public street would be. That the required parking for the apartment buildings will be off-site because the, the lot lines for the apartment buildings are 10 feet out from those buildings. So it doesn't include all the required parking. The, the garages will be on an outlot. Technically, outlots are not buildable, but we, after much deliberation, we decided that this was the way that made the most sense. There won't be anyone living in those garages, but they will contain those accessory structures. The internal lots for the individual duplexes and apartment buildings obviously don't front on a public street. And there are some setback deviations for the duplexes there with regard to setbacks. Staff does recommend approval of this, and I can take any questions you have.
Thanks, Benjamin. Questions?
So just to clarify, you've used the term duplex and townhome. The duplexes are the townhomes, right?
They are, yes. I apologize, yeah, for going back and forth. Yeah, they're built as duplexes, correct?
Other questions?
Will these units be owner occupied or rentals?
The intent of plating them on individual lots will be that they can be sold. So whether, whether or not the owner of those individual units, you know, chooses to occupy it or rent it out is, will be up to them.
Was your, yeah, I missed it. Were you asking about the townhomes being owner occupied or sold? Or you're talking about the apartments, Tim?
Well, really, I mean, just curious about the whole thing, if, if some of these will be condos that can be purchased. We just have such a need for more.
The applicant I know is here. I don't believe that for the apartments, the intent.
Okay.
I, I've not heard that they will be condos.
We'll, we'll put a pin, pin on that one. We can ask the applicant then, yeah. If you don't know, that's fine. Any other questions? You mentioned that the street will be, will be, looks like it's concrete and has to go to asphalt or something like that. It's stippled one way and then changes on the plan. So I didn't know if it was changing.
Is that, so the, the part here, at, at the southwest part where there's no, you know, marking, it's just, it's blank, that part is already built. So the, the stippled part is the part that will be, that will be new and that'll be going back. And I'd honestly have to double check. I believe it stops being the standard for the public street when it's no longer stippled and then becomes parking lot.
So will that be deeded over to the city and the city is to maintain that? Or is that remain a private street?
It will, it will be a private street. It will, it will not be maintained by the city.
Okay. And I read something in the report about some of the questions about landscaping on the south side of the private street. There's a lot of trees that were taken out there. And I didn't, is that going to be, will trees be put back in along? I know there's trees on the north side in, on the landscaping plan, but you know, is there a plan to put some trees along the south side to kind of recreate a little bit what was there previously or not?
So the, there were a lot of trees taken out off of this lot. That is correct. The, most of those are, are already gone. And, and as I believe in, in conversations with the developer, a lot of those were, you know, species that were not particularly desirable, some, some non-native species and so forth. The, to the south of the street is on the county property. I don't know exactly what their plans are for that. There will need to be parking lot trees for the small parking lot trees there that are required for shading. But you can see here, this is the landscaping plan. The, the trees are concentrated around the landscape area, or sorry, around the parking. And I worked with the, the engineer for this site to, you know, situate them. It was a little bit difficult because the, because of the, the parking lot, or the, the garage buildings, rather, made, made sighting of the specific trees a little bit difficult, but worked to find locations for them that would meet our requirements and still accommodate the chosen design.
Thank you. All right. A little public comment on Justin, if you want to offer, let me answer a couple of those questions, if you would.
Evening, council. Justin Dodge, Hunzucker Companies, 105 South 16th Street. Thank you, Benjamin, for the presentation. Okay, so the questions were owner occupied versus rental, the townhomes. It's our intent to sell those off. That's why we're plating this parcel, and that's up next. So those could be owner occupied or rental. We'll, we'll see. The apartments, as of right now, we're not planning on turning those into condos. Those will be 12s and 18s and then leased out. They could have the same owner. They could have individual owners. We don't know, but we just want that flexibility. We worked extensively with Story County and, and the Conservation Board on this site, so much so that, that the drive aisle straddles the parking lot, or I'm, I'm sorry, the property line. We're actually stubbing out utilities for them. Initially, we were going to work with them on grading. We had some excess filter that we thought that they were going to need. And then later on, they moved the shelter to a different location. And I believe their site all balances out now. So we're treating them as two separate projects, but have worked with them quite extensively. And then we'll even have some signage on the, well, it's up front, but we'll have an integrated signage with the parks. Their engineers just sent over some concepts a couple of weeks ago, and I think it's going to be sharp. And then we've also talked about the landscaping that's right on the front to make it more of an entrance into the park. The topic came up about trees on the south side of, of the drive aisle. The park actually, or the Conservation Board requested not to have trees along there. I know that they've had some, quite a few conversations with, with Benjamin and Kelly about all those things. Let's see. Trying to think what other questions there were that.
You, you got them all. I just had one more I just thought about, and that is, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but snow removal, it's a really tight site and you're right next to a fantastic park. And I'm just thrilled to see at the county and your developer, you know, you work together and you're able to straddle a property line, which I think is the first time I can remember on council, I actually see, you know, a private street being actually placed on two different pieces of property. So I appreciate the partnership. But thinking about the fact you're going to be spreading sand and salt and plowing, can you, what kind of thoughts do you have to not be getting onto their property essentially? Or what are you, I'm sure you probably thought about it, but I'm just, I'm just curious.
So on the north side of the property, it, it actually falls off into a creek.
You have quite a, quite a, you know, detention pond there, yeah.
Correct. Well, the detention basin is off on the northeast corner.
Right.
But on the north side, it, it all slopes to the north into a creek. And so our intent is to actually not even put a curb on, on some of that. So that way we can just push straight off and not damage all the curbs. So.
So everything from the south is going to go all pushed up to the north then?
I can't say that 100%. And, and snow removal contractors in, in the middle of a storm will do some crazy things that, that we can't even guess what they're going to do.
Very good.
So Justin, one follow-up. So I'm not here to micromanage a project. Are there, has there been thought to, in your covenants, having any kind of restriction on rental units? So what's to prevent someone to come in and buy up 10 of those units? And now what might have been owner occupied is again rental property. If there's been thought to using the covenants to, to limit that?
Yeah, we've looked at that in similar projects previously, and, and we did not want to do that. We want to keep those rights open. So that way, just because it might be an owner occupied right now, but let's say they get transferred and, and, you know, can't sell their place, or, or maybe they're coming back in a couple of years. We, we don't want to limit anybody's rights to their property.
Very good. Anybody else in the audience wish to address council on this topic tonight? All right, closed public comment. There's no, if there are any further questions, otherwise entertain a motion.
It's a beautiful project. I'll, I'll move alternative one.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Beatty Hanson.
Aye.
Rollins.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
Betcher.
Aye.
Thank you. Move on to item number 20, resolution approving a residential preliminary plat for 3200 University Boulevard.
So same project again. This is just the preliminary plat, which is the first step in subdividing the property. It is currently a platted lot. It was platted with the research park during, during one of its phases. And so this would break it off into the individual units. This is a drawing that shows without any improvements there. You can see the utilities are coming from the north. They're actually coming off of the work Kiva property, which was planned for initially with part of the development, both the water and the sewer. This project is served by Ames Electric. This is actually just on the border of Ames Electric territory. So just to the south is actually Lion Territory. Staff does find that meets the requirements and we do recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions? A little public comment. Anyone want to address council on this topic? Closed public input, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Rollins.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
Betcher.
Aye.
Beatty Hanson.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Benjamin. All right, Susan, we'll move on to presentation of residential, residential, resident satisfaction survey.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here to present the results of the 43rd Annual Resident Satisfaction Survey. Just some background on this survey. It was done, again, with assistance from the Institute for Design Research and Outreach, or IDRO, from the College of Design, Iowa State University. And the survey is distributed each year through utility bill customers or students. So utility bill customers receive it by US mail and students receive it by email. We got 464 return surveys this year, which is a little bit higher than last year's amount. And as you can see, the last couple of years, it's gone up and down a little bit. There is an online option for non-students, which we'd offered. So if you get in the mail, the hard copy of the survey, it tells you you can go online and fill it out. We really had hoped that was going to gain in popularity. It dropped a little bit this year. Very close to last year, 28 people filled it out online. And when we first started, it was really growing and then it kind of dropped. So we also offer the opportunity to respond to the survey in five languages. And those are listed at the top. We did not have anybody use that option this year. We've, I think, only had one person use it since we've done it, but it's a nice option to have. We have conducted the survey. It has a 95% competence interview interval, plus or minus 5% margin of error. And that suggests that if the survey was given to the entire population, 95 out of 100 times, we would have results that are plus or minus 5%. So the survey was distributed in April and May, and people are given several weeks to return them. We usually have them come back in June, but they actually do trickle in throughout the summer. We did add some changes to the survey this year. We added questions regarding the indoor aquatics, regarding boards and commissions participation, about preferences for city communications. And then we did ask a question for residents to prioritize their human services investments. And that was the asset question that was added. So we have some basic charts that we, I tend to focus on. They're kind of the nuts and bolts of the survey. As you know, the survey is lengthy. It was 160-plus pages this year. About 90 pages were the survey, and then the remaining, remaining pages were comments. And they have done a good job. Our consultants do a nice job of trying to group those comments in ways that sort of share a similar theme or topic. But I always try to go back to some of the more important graphs that I want to draw your attention to. This is the, the ongoing service priorities graph, which is services that are paid for by, by property tax or local option sales tax. This has been in the survey for many, many years. And for many, many years, when you ask people to, should the city spend more or less or the same, the most common answer is the same. And you see that ranging from, in all 10 categories, ranging from 56% to 82% of people saying the same amount of money should be allocated to those topics. The top three ratings on, which, if you go back, it gives you a average. The scale on this one is one, two, or three, with two being the same. So if you wanted to see where people wanted to spend a little bit more money, those are the ones that get higher than two on the response. And those top three categories are parks activities, Ames Animal Shelter and Animal Control, and recreational opportunities. Again, remembering that 10 out of 10 categories, the result was keep spending the same. And I'm always saying that because we had some other information about spending that will come up in a bit, right here. What is your preferred property tax adjustment? This is the first time we've seen a little bit of a jump in the decrease column. I went actually back to 2008 to find one where we were in the 30s like that. That is the number of people who've said they would like to see a decrease. Again, the majority of people are saying keep property taxes the same. And if you look at between 2024 and 2025, the spend the same, keep the taxes the same, dropped from 53 to 45, and those people split. They went 4% to, to decrease and 4% to increase. So I'm, I'm not really sure what that means other than we just watch these numbers over time, but it certainly suggests that, that when you add those categories together, the 33 and the 45, or the 45 and the, and the 22, you can take it one way or the other. But we, what we see is people gravitating towards the middle is typically what we see. Okay, so no change in property tax rate for 45% respondents, and the increase and decrease both went up or down by the same. So capital improvement priorities, these are for the large projects that we work on. This has been a, a table that we've had in for years, and it asks people again, what are your priorities? Those are listed there. And the, for the second year, reconstructing existing streets, traffic flow improvements, and sustainable solutions incorporated into the above projects are the top three. This is a change from before we added that sustainable solutions into capital improvements. The top three had always been reconstructing streets, traffic flow improvements, and stormwater. So when we make change. So when we make changes to the survey, it it can result in different rankings of the choices given. So that's how that one played out. Now we get into specific department feedback. And these numbers, I'm happy to say, have been relative have been consistently high for years. And it's really impressive to see numbers in the high 90 percentages of people who say, I am happy with the services that I get from this department. Public nuisance enforcement could actually cover a couple of different departments. That's an enforcement area. It tends to to rank a little bit lower. People often have complaints or concerns or questions about how things are happening. And you saw those in the comments where people are saying things like, nobody is is checking on this. Nobody is is looking at my neighbor's yard. And again, those are I I've mentioned this before. I do poll those comments and I keep those a list of those to do public information on the fact that some of our enforcement activities are complaint driven. And we don't have people that are out there checking on those things. So there isn't a way to specifically answer each respondent, so I look for different ways to do that. So if you look at over time, our satisfaction level with city services, you'll see that they also remain fairly consistent. The 2025 is the gold bar, which is the last one. And if you sort of look over time, they stay fairly stable and they stay high, which is always nice to see. The next one is how do people get their information? This is one that I went back many years ago to look at because I'm always sort of amazed at what I look at is the column in the middle of the percent who use different tools of communication. And what I see is a flattening of the tools that you don't see one or two that are dominating. Although I will say that it still looks pretty impressive for the City of Ames website. It does get a lot of use and I'm really glad that we invested in a new and improved website this spring because that remains a key way that people are getting information. But what you're seeing is more and more other tools are just getting sort of their own little pockets of of growth and followers. So I keep that in mind when we do our outreach and education efforts. This was a question that was added. It was a it was a pretty complicated question about prioritizing the services that are funded through the asset process. And so we listed them and then we asked people to prioritize their top ones. And they prioritize pretty consistently with their first priority was food assistance and housing. Second priority ended up being food assistance. And the third priority, food assistance again, which when people are looking at large lists like that, they're going back to the basics. We did ask people, which was also interesting, to look at people, had they accessed those services? And you can look in the report and see that there were people who mentioned they had used the services. Mostly transportation was one of the more popular ones. One of the other question sections of questions that have come in in the last 10 years asked more about community connectedness, mental health kinds of questions. And the new question on this was about serving or considering serving on a city board or commission. So I dropped that one in on this. We'll have to track that one over time. But just interesting to me, the data, these particular questions I pulled from the table and I've looked at and sort of charting them over time about issues facing my community are important to me. That remains high. But am I knowledgeable about the issues? I was interested in that jump that people feel more educated about the issues this year as opposed to last year. And so we'll watch that and see and maybe we're maybe there's some tool that we're using that people are responding to. So the top three climate action steps for the City of Ames, this has now been that section has been in the report now two years. It asks people to prioritize and you see the percentages from top to bottom. So I put those over the over 2024 and 2025. You can see the biggest reasons to commit to environmental sustainability. A little bit of change in those numbers, but some fairly consistent responses. And then the one of the final things we ask people is sort of the overall stamp of approval or what do they, you know, what do they think about being a Ames resident? What are they or when we ask them on a four-point scale of poor, fair, good, or very good, how do they feel that they are? What is their satisfaction with City of Ames quality of services? And you'll see that we had 98% good to very good ratings, which is really very impressive. A little bit better than last year. We dropped a little bit in the very good. Those people dropped into good. But still overall, an impressive response. We ask people about the best things about living in Ames and we give them an open-ended question. This produces a word cloud that generates the font, largest font, the largest reflect a more popular answer. So you see the parks, green spaces and trails, people, atmosphere, Iowa State as being mentioned frequently. And you see those in the comments as well. And that is a brief overview of the resident satisfaction survey. I know you've all seen it. It is. It will be. It lives on the city manager's page on the City of Ames website, where I went back to 2008 is on there. My initial intention was just to have about 10 years on there, but I just keep putting them on. Anybody can see it. It has a ton of information and you can compare them to previous years. There's our website. Were there any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Susan, how much does it cost us to work with Iowa State on this? Is there?
I just signed a contract for next year. It's $8,700. So we are responsible for doing the mailings. They are responsible for collecting the information, emailing students, doing all the data input and then the analysis and providing the first draft of the report.
And so so we pay 8,700 to Iowa State and then what's our the portion of our cost for mailing?
It's a couple thousand dollars. I don't have the exact number, but I'm thinking it's two or two to 3,000 for the printing and mailing.
Yep. This seems like a very reasonable investment for the data that we're receiving. And I wonder if there may be other situations where we could do something on a more limited basis that allows us to take advantage, meaning that 95%, where my notes go, 95% competence. What do you call it competence? Interval?
A confidence, yeah, a CI.
Yeah, that's that's really intriguing. So yeah, this seems very helpful. Thanks.
Other questions?
I just wondered about the flattening that you mentioned with how folks are getting their news and and information. So what's that mean for your your areas?
You know, we talk about this a lot. It just means you use a lot of tools. There is not. There is the the idea of using legacy media and covering the majority of your population is just not a reality anymore. And it's not something that it's something everybody is dealing with. So how do we grab attention? It's just something that we'll continue to work on. And what we'll do is we'll use multiple tools until they're no longer effective and then we'll go to other tools. I I'm always optimistic that we will reach people in one way or another. We just have to find the right combination.
I wonder if some of the pushback on the property taxes is that we've had some pretty high inflation. And so people are having to look at their budgets a little tighter because of that. I'm just speculating. But it seems like that has to be a factor.
Yeah, remember this was going out in the spring, so you have to always think about what was happening in the spring.
Just one quick question is, you have on figure one, the geographic sections, you know, where the responses came from. Do you track that year over year in terms of and how that might affect any of the other data?
Yeah, I do look to make sure that it kind of plays out that we're getting representation. This year we had, I think this year's the year that we had many more men than women. The gender flops around a little bit. I actually defer a lot to the consultants to see if they're concerned about it, like is that a and and so far, they haven't mentioned it's a problem. But if they were way out of whack, we certainly would have to do something about it. You can oversample if you don't feel that you've you're getting the proper representation from any kind of demographic. And in fact, one year when we first started offering the survey to students and we offered it by email, we were inundated and we had to actually pull them out because they were skewing the data. So it can happen. And I I do hear every year from people who say, I don't believe you've done this survey for 40 years because I've never gotten one. And again, it is not a self-select survey and I cannot give anybody a survey. You have to be selected. I have had people say they've been selected more than once. It does happen. But it is a limited number and it's by design.
So like 49% of people came from northwest, 27 from southwest, and then southeast, 13, and 11% from northeast. I'm just curious, is the response rate different? Do you try and get each quadrant to have a similar number of queries?
So I think that the quadrants, you know, it's probably something we need to look at because they were at one point based on population. So we need to look and see if that's still where the population is. I think at at first, it was just an easy geographic way to divide them up. But as the wards have moved in response to the senses, that's probably a good point that we need to make sure that the demographics are moving as well, that we're getting the same number of people in each part of the community.
Yeah, and just they having a similar response rate and there's not. Is there a reason why? That's all.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
And I'll be back in February to talk about maybe some other questions you might want to add. So you have some time to think about that. And in the meantime, again, sometime this week, we'll post the completed survey on the city manager's page on the website.
Thank you, Susan. All right, move on. Item 21, fiscal year 25, 26, first quarter financial update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have some familiar faces with me tonight. You all, you know Nancy Masteller, our budget manager. And then tonight, maybe a less familiar face is Roger Weiscup. He's our treasurer. So we have two items on the agenda tonight related to financial reports. The investment report, you're probably familiar with. That's usually on the consent agenda quarterly. Tonight, for the first time, we're presenting a quarterly financial report. One of the questions that we kind of evaluated was what's the intent of this report? And so the the first item I item we identified was it really is best practice. So we should be providing the council timely information to enable them to make decisions and for for the public to provide transparencies. And so I think the four items that we identified, like I said, is transparency, proactive decision-making on behalf of the council. And then I think long term, we just want to create a standard of providing you this information, providing the public this information. So if there's any questions, it'll be searchable on our website. And the council is also certainly we can answer questions. And if there's anything we would need to look up or we need to follow up on, we could do that at a future future report. So I'm going to let Nancy kind of run through some of the highlights of the information and maybe the format of the report here.
Okay, we just had a couple of things we wanted to mention before we get started.
Could you pull the mic just a little closer? Thanks, Nancy.
Better. First of all, when we kick off the budget in January, you know, we always go through each fund page by page by page as you all have experienced in the past. So this report is really just sort of a condensed version of that. It shows the beginning balance as of June 30th, when the fiscal previous fiscal year just ended, the revenues to date, the expenses to date, and what then the ending fund balance is for September 30th of this year. We did want to make sure that you knew that the beginning balances that we're showing on here are not the maybe the final ones. We're still going through the audit process. There's still some adjustments being made. I would anticipate that by the time we do the second quarter one at the end of December, that those should be final numbers. Just a couple of things we thought maybe would warrant an explanation as we kind of look through this for the first time is you'll see a few funds that will have negative beginning balances. That's nothing to be concerned about. Those are typically construction funds or funds that are grant funded. So it's very common that there will be expenses and they just haven't been reimbursed yet. And we would expect the reimbursements to come in in the current fiscal year. The revenues that we've provided on there's a on the revenue comparison sheet, the adopted revenues are still the adopted revenues. The expenses have changed a little bit. That we did the First Amendment in September for carryovers. And so the expenses have been adjusted for those carryovers that we approved in September. The negative expenditures you might see, especially with it being a first quarter report, sometimes there's a couple of places where you'll see a negative expenditure. That's because we had an expense that we paid for in this fiscal year, but it was really for the prior fiscal year. We just paid the bill late, like maybe in July or August. It's been accrued back to the prior fiscal year. The payment hasn't come through yet to offset that. Those should disappear as we go through the year. So Cory's going to bring up the report and I'm just going to kind of walk through what the different columns are. We have this arranged by all of our different fund types. The fund balance at 63025 is our unaudited one, as I mentioned. But you know, most of them should be pretty close. The fiscal year to date revenues is our is our year to date through September 30th. The expenditures are through September 30th. And then we have what is our quarter one ending balance. And then just as a comparison, what we've adopted that the ending balance would be. Going through, we didn't really see anything that we that was unexpected for the fund balances or the revenues or expenditures. Timing for different funds is very different. And so you have all the information. I'd be glad to answer any questions. It's a lot of information the first time that you've seen it. But I'd be glad to walk you through any questions that you've got.
So Nancy, when I first got counsel, I wanted to see more frequent like even quarterly reports. And the answer was no, we really can't do that because of the way that money flows in and out of our system doesn't really lend itself to that like a regular business would. And so so I I think I am happy. This is this is but we need a bit of an education on our part. And I'm I'm wondering in terms of looking at meaningful, you know, I want this to be meaningful and not a box to check. So
Right.
As as we think about providing this in a meaningful format, you've got on the fund balance summary and then you've got later, you've got a comparison year to year. And I'm I'm wondering if that were you planning on going to that at some point, that slide or?
It shows the revenues or the expenditure comparisons. We just have slides for the fund balance portion of it. But I've got the report here if you want to ask a question about it.
Well, it and and so this is just the question from Naivete. But it seems like when looking at a city's budget, that it would be more meaningful to look at where revenues and expenses are year to date at this point in the fiscal year compared to the prior years. In other words, just looking at this year.
Right.
There's there's some value because of the way the revenues flow in and out. It seems like the comparison would be more meaningful.
And we did have that information on here. It that if you look at the expenditure or the revenue report, there's the prior fiscal year in the first two columns. And then the comparison actual at 93024 is on there as a comparison to where we are at this fiscal year.
Right. And so and I know that you don't have a slide for that. But is there anything and I I would like you to drive this conversation rather than me.
Okay.
So as as you look at the year-to-date comparison between prior year and this year, are there any deviations that you think would be important for us to give attention to? Or things fairly consistent, we're sort of on automatic pilot, anything that you think should you should you should be flogging?
We went through this. I mean, actually, the one thing that kind of surprised me when Cory first brought up doing this, we did one for the end of the fiscal year 2425 first, so I could just kind of see how it was going to come together. And we haven't usually, we'll look at it fund by fund, but we hadn't really looked at it in this format. And I actually thought it was a good tool for us to use in finance as well. And you know, that maybe we should pull this information together and then share it with the accounting staff, you know, so that they can answer questions and we can catch, you know, things that come up too. First quarter, I think, is always tricky because there's just not a lot of data yet. I would guess most of the revenues and expenditures that we get in July really end up getting accrued back to the prior fiscal year. So I didn't see anything in this that showed like any deviations. I think the one thing that Cory and I both looked at when we pulled the information together was we thought that sewer revenue was actually a little bit higher than we anticipated. I wouldn't expect it to be 25% at the end of September because almost all their billings for July actually get accrued back to the prior year. But we, when we investigated it, we found that we had done a billing to.
USDA.
USDA for their portion of the nutrient reduction project at WPC. And so that was the explanation for why that one was higher. So I think as we put this report together every quarter for you, we'll go through and look through for the deviations, and we'll include what we found in the report so that you don't have to ask us up here if we, if we bring it as a presentation. Hopefully, we can head off some of the questions by having already researched the answers.
Yeah, so some kind of like an executive summary would be helpful. And just one final question. There was a while where the local option sales tax revenues was coming in in a fairly lumpy way. It wasn't coming consistently. Has that changed now or are things now more consistent with the way in which the state is?
It's monthly. It's monthly now.
Yeah, so, so sales tax and hotel motel tax now come in monthly. So we, it used to be, I believe it was quarterly is what it was before, and there was some formula for reconciliation on an annual basis in November for sales tax. And that's, that's been modified, I think, with legislation rules in the last couple of years. So should be much more, I guess, linear than it had been in the past.
Yeah, great. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Other questions? If there are none.
We do have just a, we haven't reviewed the quarterly report.
I was just gonna.
Oops, sorry.
I have a question.
Sorry, Sean.
I thought you were kicking me out.
No, no, I just, I think it'd be important, maybe you just review that. If people look at this, they may just think, why are these funds short money? Where's the revenue? And maybe you could just touch on, you know, a little bit how they, in brief, you know, operate in terms of when you get a, a distribution from property taxes and when you get, you know, bondage. I mean, just so they wonder, well, how are you going to make ends meet or why is it going to go down? Because we see it snapshot in time every quarter, it's going to fluctuate. But the point being is that, I echo too, I really appreciate you doing this. I think this is really a good idea, and I appreciate your introductory, you know, your, basically a commentary.
Yeah.
To kind of point out, because I think it's good for you to identify where some things are, why, why they may be happening this way or that way, so.
A lot of those things are things that like look normal to us, but when we, when you look at it, put all put together, you know, I could see where there'd be questions about some of them. As far as the timing, you know, it just really varies from fund to fund, you know, like.
In terms of, in terms of revenue coming in.
In terms of both revenue, expenditures as well, but revenues too, like we saw local option sales tax is monthly now, hotel motel tax is monthly, road use tax, I believe, monthly.
Yeah.
Monthly. But property taxes, for example, probably would look lower for the first portion of the year, but then October is when they, they would, you know, we would start getting more receipts in that area. You know, things like bonds, we haven't issued bonds yet this year, so, but we will this fall. So when you see the report at the end of the second quarter, the revenue will be up substantially in that area. As far as expenditures, like if you look at the debt service fund, there's no expenditures yet in this fiscal year. That's because we haven't made any bond or principal payments yet. That will happen in December 1st. So there's always going to be some timing things, and yeah, we'd be glad to, you know, add those kinds of explanations and things to make it easier for people to understand.
Yeah, just something that's bulletproof, and you, that's what you did, just short explanations, helpful, drawing attention because you're trying to be transparent. And so this, people can, how can residents who want to look at this, will this, where will this be posted?
We're going to have it on the city's finance webpage in, with our other reports that we have out there. We have a history section.
Yep.
But we would add it to where we have prior year budgets and capital improvement plans and our financial reports.
Very good.
So this is random and, but I think for the average person pulling this up, and I put myself in this category, this is just a sea of numbers.
I know.
Would it be crazy to think about having like a two-minute video or five-minute video on how, how to use this? I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion.
Yeah, we could work with, with Bill on, on putting something together. I mean, we, we did that last year for the property tax, but you know, maybe something similar, just a little educational video.
Yeah, just an introduction, how to, how would someone look at this for the first time and make sense of it? The goal is to be meaningful and transparent. Something a little like, like that might be very helpful, just an idea.
All right, let's move on to the quarterly investment report.
Good evening. Our investment program continues to follow the priorities outlined in Iowa Code, Chapter 12B, and the city's investment policy, which are safety, liquidity, and yield. Safety is always our top priority. We invest only in authorized, high-quality instruments. The portfolio is continually monitored to protect our taxpayers' funds. For liquidity, we make sure we have funds available on a day-to-day needs such as payroll, bills, debt service. Our maturities are ladder so that cash is accessible when needed, providing flexibility and for planned and unexpected expenses. And within those limits, we seek a reasonable yield by investing at competitive market rates. So in short, our best strategy continues to emphasize safety first, maintain strong liquidity, and achieve solid market competitive returns in full compliance with state law and city policy.
We prepared some graphs today, so this is just.
Do you want to go back to yours? I think your other slide was.
Oh, sorry, this is what we can invest in. So this was also included in the report. So we can't invest in futures or options. So Roger mentioned things that we could invest in, very conservative investment options. I think that was the last slide. We can't have repurchase agreements. We can't do any kind of speculation. We can't hold common stock. We've been getting common stock as gifts for the animal shelter. We've been liquidating that, we've been getting it.
And that's an important question because we've actually had a couple of emails in the last six months saying, do you invest in common stocks or why are you investing in stocks? And so you can, you answer the question.
We've had some donations of common stock, and we send those to a broker to cash in.
But the point being is Roger Weiskopf on behalf of the city cannot and does not invest in common stock, any kind of stock.
Not at all.
And we don't time the market. We get it and we sell it at whatever the market price is at the time, so.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry. I don't know if you want to touch on this. It's just the rate of return by quarter. So you can see, obviously, Fed funds rate went up. We're about 4% now, so a higher rate of return. We expect, obviously, that to trend downward as, as the Fed funds rate tends to decrease.
But, by the way, Cory, that last slide, that wasn't in our packet.
Oh.
So I think that's just helpful just to have it. Maybe you could just, you could just add that, you know, Roger, next time, is this what you can or what you do and what you can't? And that's just because it's in our public record.
Sure. Yep, we can do that. Do you want to touch on this one, Roger?
And this is the interest we've earned in our portfolio by quarter, and you can see it trends along with the upward interest rates. So as the interest rates are going to come down, our interest earned is going to also correlate down. And this last slide shows our cash and investment balances by quarter. The bottom line, the orange line, is our cash balances in our checking account. And the middle line is our portfolio balances by quarter. The top line is the, the sum of both. But you can see that we keep right around $30 million in our checking account, and a lot of that is because with our depository, First National Bank, they pay us a good rate of interest based on the 91-day T-bill average, which last month was around 3.74%. So that's a pretty good yield. We try to keep a little bit of money in there also for liquidity purposes.
And I asked you this afternoon, maybe you can answer this. What is, like most individuals, $250,000 over that, it's not FDID, FDIC insured? Can you talk about that in terms of the security?
I can't. It is not FDIC insured, but the state of Iowa has a collateral program. So any bank that has public funds has to pledge collateral to the state in the amount of those funds that they're holding. So if that bank goes under, the state can pull those securities and cash in, and if it's a deficit, then the other banks that are also in that pool will also contribute to get us two whole.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. I think that's our last slide. Like I said, we plan on presenting this information quarterly. If, as you read the report, you find that you have questions, please let us know. We'll make sure to include that in any future reports. And, you know, this is our first one, so we're happy to take suggestions, make improvements, provide additional information. We know that there's going to be important topics like the opening of the indoor pool or the construction of our 3C campus project. So we'll keep those and things in mind as we provide you the information. But again, if you have any questions, we're happy to show up and present that information to the council and public whenever we show up for these reports, so.
Thank you. Questions for Cory?
Yeah.
Or for Roger? All right. An entertaining motion approving the quarterly investment report for period ending September 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Cory, ari.
Aye.
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 Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Move on to item number 23, resolution approving lease agreement with border regions for Ames Fire Station Number Two. Chief Higgins.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm here to ask for your approval for the lease agreement between the City of Ames and Iowa State University, which will actually be with the state of Iowa. I'll, I'll hit a few of the high points for you. We've been working with Iowa State Leadership for quite a while now on a property on the west side of State Avenue. Its address is 601 State Avenue. It's the top of the Hill Estate in between Mortenson and Lincolnway. And we've identified a 29-acre parcel that Iowa State, it's been agricultural for all these years. Iowa State has agreed that this would be a great site to relocate Ames Fire Station Number Two from the current location at Welch Avenue to this location. Staff has prepared a lease agreement that Iowa State is agreeable to take to the border regions at their November 11th meeting. Should this pass the Tuesday, November 4th bond referendum, the $10.5 million vote that'll be, that'll be out for the public. The lease will come with no cost to the City of Ames, and the obligation that the City of Ames would have back to Iowa State University is to put a fire station on the site, any traffic control measures on State Avenue, and also maintain the property. The 52-year lease, two years, is for the construction. The 50 years is for the longevity of the fire station, and we would also have the option to renew the lease agreement with Iowa State University. From there, I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Chief. Questions?
Chief, thanks for this. One of the things that I now have sort of permanently planted in my, my brain is, as we think about the end of these leases, the situation with the school board and the pool has to be a reminder to us to think about what happens at the end of the lease. And so you've got Section 15 of the lease deals with, with that. And so could you just walk us through what happens at the end?
So yeah, if the, the City of Ames and Iowa State are not able to come to an agreement to extend the lease, then we would be responsible to remove and return the site back to its, its normal, open agricultural area. We remove the, anything that's been built on that site.
And that's going to be completely on our, our cost?
Yes. We would return it back to Iowa State as we received it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's intentional on our part rather than we just, we just didn't think about it 30 years ago. Thanks. That's all I had.
Yeah. Any questions? Roll one. Any questions?
No, thank you.
And I think that's pretty, those are us saying that staff and Iowa State have spent a lot of time working on this back and forth, so.
Right. We want to again thank Iowa State University Administration for being supportive of a lot of projects, which they allow us to use land. This type of land could have cost us substantially more added to the cost of the project if we weren't allowed to use this. So I want to thank them again. Shows the partnership we have with them. We'll continue to have those kind of partnerships, which will benefit not only the university, but the citizens of Ames.
Can you just briefly comment on, there's a variety of different landscaping. You got trees, you got wildflowers, you got row crops right now, you got other things. Is the city responsible for maintaining all 29 acres of that?
We, we would be, yeah. We'd be responsible for maintaining the entire site. We've talked a little bit with our Parks and Rec Department about some options for the future. We will not do row crops in there. That's part of the agreement is.
It's, I meant to say, it is row crops now, but yeah.
Yeah, we would love to do more of a prairie, a low maintenance, something to, that wouldn't require a lot of maintenance.
We did ask about leasing a smaller site that would just accommodate the actual station itself, but the university prepared that we took over the whole parcel. So it's a lot larger than we need, but we'll keep a low-maintenance kind of growth.
Can the city program, different uses?
No, it's only used for a fire station. If we try to use it for something else, we have to get permission from the.
I'm thinking about like an additional park space, for example.
Right. We need, we need to get permission from it. It's not, it's not allowed, it's just that we can't do it unilaterally.
And who maintains the bike path that goes, or the, the path that goes through our, that property?
We, what the city of Ames.
City does.
That's all you do now?
The east-west bike path you're talking about?
It's on their property?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I knew that. I was just, no, it's, just asking for a friend. All right. Entertaining motion on resolution approving the lease agreement with border regions, state of Iowa, for university property located at State Avenue for relocation of Ames Fire Station Two.
Will approval?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Thanks for coming, Chief.
Thanks so much.
All right. Entertaining motion on second reading, oh, yeah, second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 28 of the Ames Municipal Code, adjusting electric rates by one and a half percent. Is there a motion?
Move on second.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you. And staff has requested council's consideration to suspend the rules and allow for a third reading and adoption of the ordinance tonight. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Will we suspend the rules?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Entertaining motion to, on the third reading and adoption of ordinance number 4575.
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you. We'll move on to item number 26, entertaining motion on third reading and adoption of ordinance number 4574 regarding establishment of non-resident sanitary sewer rates and certain water and pollution control fees.
Move on third.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you. And item number 27, the hearing on lease of city property located east of 731 Billy Sunday Road, now known as Lot 3 of Billy Sunday Subdivision to Lamar Advertising Company. Entertaining motion to continue the public hearing to November 18th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Those appear the motion, just do roll call.
Aye.[1732.01]
Aye.
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 Number 28, zoning text amendment to amend material standards for off-street parking areas and driveways for agriculture equipment and the research park. Hi, Kelly.
Hey. It's pretty straightforward. If there's any questions, this is a limited application to the research park, has to be accessory to a principal use behind a building, it should be not impactful to the area.
Questions for Kelly? All right. Declare the public hearing on this zoning text amendment to be open. Is there anyone in the, who wants to address council on this particular topic? Seeing and hearing none, declare the public hearing to be closed, entertain a motion on first reading of ordinance.
Move on first.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Kelly. Move on to item number 29. Any questions for staff on the traffic signal program project?
Very nice bids.
Yep. All right. Declare the public hearing on the 2025-2026 Traffic Signal Program to be open. Is there anyone who wants to address council on this project? Seeing none, hearing none, declare the public hearing to be closed, entertain motion accepting reported bids.
So moved.
Second.
Those who pay the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Entertained motion on resolution approving the final plan, specifications, and awarding a contract to Iowa Signal Incorporated of Grimes, Iowa in the amount of $75,423.95.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Move on to item number 30, hearing on 2024-2025 CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance Report. Good evening, Ms. Vanessa.
Good evening, Mayor and Councils. My privilege and honor to report our 2425 Consolidated Annual Action Plan Report, the CAPR. Just quickly, we got one pump, public comment during the comment period. It was very positive. I put it in the packet for you, council, to read. We spent about just over $600,000 in our CDBG program. A lot of that was on our renter affordability program and disposition of properties and reuse of lots in the Baker subdivision. We spent just over $1.9 million under our home program for the construction of our 38 units as part of our Lytec project and the Baker subdivision. And those were kind of the highlights of our CAPR report for 2425. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. As a side note, are, are you seeing significant changes, challenges in your work because of the federal shutdown? How is that affecting what you're doing?
Well.
Can you give us a couple sentences on that?
Uh, well, I'm still submitting reports to a portal. No response from anyone. This CAPR report, we had asked for an extension. I'm going to submit it like it was someone there. I don't know if anyone's receiving it or not, but we'll just have the documentation that we did try to put it in the portal. We know that portal is working, but there's actually no personnel there. And I'm told from talking to all of my colleagues that once we start drawing down money, the money's going to come, even though there's really not anyone there. But someone's, something's pushing the button if you ask for money, which is good.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Declare the public hearing in this item to be open. Is anyone who wants to address council on this topic tonight? Seeing and hearing none, declare the public hearing to be closed, entertain motion on resolution approving the submittal of the city's 2024-2025 CAPR.
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to disposition of communications to council. There are four items. There's one from Martha Atkins, Ames Reston, be it stormwater management improvements.
I think you should refer that to staff, give a background on that issue. We'll go to public works.
Will we refer that to staff?
Second.
Thank you. Those who pay the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Second is a request from Martin Laird regarding installation of no bicycle signs on Sixth Street sidewalks.
You might want to get a memo from Public Works on this, too. Try to explain the issue for you.
There's a lot of construction on this street, and I, I feel like a lot of the issue is because of that. And I, I'm, I just think the issue might go away when the construction is done, and that's my thought.
Oh, okay. You want to wait then?
No, wait, or just, just send a, see if we have.
We'll be glad to wait.
Have a staff member.
Martin Laird.
Maybe could I move that we thank the sender for their input and let them know that we're waiting for construction to be done before we assess that this is an issue?
Yep. Is that a motion?
That is my motion, yes.
There's a second? There's a second? Those who may say aye.
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 Any opposed? Carried. Next is a request from Ames resident, Tim Ashley, for zoning text amendment for stairway enclosure.
So this is, this person requested a variance that was denied, so their only opportunity for relief is if you were to pursue a zoning text amendment that would enable a, a covered projection over a recessed stairwell that goes to a basement apartment, duplex unit.
That's not allowed by what?
Uh, it encroaches into a setback. The covering does.
That's. So it takes a zoning text amendment?
The variance was denied, right? It wasn't a unique situation. So if you want a memo, we can explain what that would mean. I think he's giving you like the whole ZBA report and all the background. It's about what, what the situation is.
Kelly, I was curious, could he, if he just puts some kind of temporary covering on the sides, I mean, he's trying to keep it from snow coming in, I think, and leaves blowing in, is that like a, like a tarp or something like that, or some kind of a, so is that permanent?
It's affixed to the ground. Whether it's made out of fabric or tarp or wood or whatever, it, it starts to become permanent. We don't really have temporary. I mean, if you literally put something out over the weekend, right, that's not ever going to be an issue. If you put a tarp up for nine months over the top of something, then it gets to be.
Oh, is there any interest in a memo from staff or just no action, which means no change to situation will occur in the decision by a ZBA?
So I, I look at these, I try to ask, you know, does this seem like it's crazy? And what they're wanting seems very nominal. Encroaching approximately 3.5 feet into the eight-foot minimum side yard setback. It just seems very nominal. So I want to try to find ways to say yes, in a way that doesn't upset the applicant card and bring in unintended consequences. So I guess I would be interested in a memo, uh, that would be, would help us as a council to understand, are there unintended consequences if we were to go forward with this text amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay. Those who pay the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. And the last one is memo from Kelly on JT Logistics Warehouse landscaping request. This is kind of a response to the email and also, I am.
What's the bottom line? The, the way I see it, after talking to them, as, as you mentioned, Mayor, they thought we were undertaking a code update, which you have not put in front of me. Eventually, we will do a code update. The degree of that update, in my mind, was about, was minor. It was a small amount of change in planting ratios, probably. Their ask is for a substantial alteration to a parking lot tree requirement, which I was not personally thinking we were going to undertake. So I think there's a question there of, there, I'm sure the development community love for reduced landscape standards. If that's an issue the council wants to take up right now, you could refer that. May have some marginal benefit to JT Warehouse. If you're interested in their issue, it would take a substantial change to the, to the landscape code to get all the way to reduced parking lot trees like, like they've asked. So I think the question is, do you want to prioritize doing some kind of minor change? Now, later, never? That's, that's really what's in front of you.
And I think that I mentioned previously that I errantly thought that we had given some direction to staff to move forward, and so that's what kind of precipitated this. I'm happy to respond back to them and let them know that it's my, my bad. I was thinking, I thought it was on the work plan to be doing that. So anyway.
Yes, it's embedded in the update of the overall zoning ordinance. We did talk about it in April. It just was never pulled out as a separate project, which, which again, I've given you options. If you want to do that, you could do that at this point.
Which, and also in this, you did say that, one of the things they were asking about was postponing the installation of.
That issue's already been addressed.
Which has already been addressed, because we need to do phase two. And then we are going to try and kind, we're going to try and contact the Union Pacific. They have some drainage that goes in and is eroding some of their stormwater site. I don't know if we'll have any luck doing that, but we're going to try and help them on that. And you had something about trees or something on helping with soil.
So we do have the 20% flexibility rule that you guys adopted just over a year ago. So if there's a condition that, that really prevents you from successfully meeting the zoning standards, we have some flexibility there. So I alluded to that if their engineers come back to us and say, this really isn't working, we have some flexibility to remove or, or to probably remove from the, the quantity of, a reduction in the quantity of trees, there's not really anywhere else to put them. But it doesn't take out 34 trees. It would be a, a smaller amount.
It could take out six or seven.
Yeah, easily. If that's, yeah. So if that comes back as the issue, that could be resolved by staff with no text amendments.
I think I'm accurately representing that they were not asking for us or for council to rewrite the code to help them out. It was just more or less, if there was going to be some changes in the code being made, would they give consideration to it? And then, then all of a sudden, the 34 trees, you know, being removed came out of, you know, nowhere. But anyway.
So Kelly, I apologize. So they, it seems like, is it premature for us to look at this? I mean, if, are there still ongoing conversations between you and their engineers to see?
There, there isn't, other than what I heard third hand was that they had some concerns about this drainage issue. But we haven't been called out for a site inspection yet. Like, it hasn't gotten to the point where city, where planning staff would really be on the site looking at things or, or being asked, they haven't asked us to change anything personally directly.
I know, it just seems like there should be more conversation with staff to see if some kind of compromise could be reached before we take some step. I don't know.
So we did talk to them before I wrote this memo, right? Like, we, we don't have the authority to remove 34 trees.
Right. But I mean, there was some opportunity to compromise on.
The 20% is within our discretion. They just hadn't asked for that. They had not communicated that was an issue to us.
Okay.
Can we just pick like option one, two, or three, or do we need to put it on an agenda?
I think it has to go on an agenda.
Right.
To what?
I move we place this item on a future agenda?
What, with, um, with one of the options, or what do you, what do you think being an option, or what do you?
Yeah, I was going to do option three, no change at this time.
Oh, if, if you pick option three, you don't have to put it on an agenda. There'd be no referral to move it forward. If you want to talk about option one or two, then you put it on an agenda.
If you don't want to take action, we'll just notify, you just notify.
So are you going with that same motion?
No, I'll withdraw.
So Kelly, and it's late, but what's, what's at stake here? I, I'm, I'm still struggling to figure out why we should care and why it's so important to them. Can you, I've got the material in front of me here, but what's, what's, what's the fight about?
No, there's not really a fight.
I don't know if it's a fight. I think the city is going to someday probably reduce, or at least contemplate reducing some planning requirements, not to the decree, not to the, even close to the degree that was stated in that letter. So the question really is, do you want to, do you want to prioritize immediately doing some small change?
Oh, I see.
Or not doing anything now and just wait till we get to a zoning ordinance update, which will be well passed when JT Logistics gets into their billing and is using it and won't even be relevant anymore?
And with part of that potentially, I mean, and in addition, then could there also be is, is request you as the director to look at the latitude of the 20% modification and work with them on the trees?
Yeah, you didn't even have to tell me to do that. That's, that's just already built into our processes.
So these aren't fights. These are your laws that we're implementing. If you want to change laws, it's what your vision is for landscaping. So if you believe we have too much, then we can change it. We're just implementing what you're telling us to do.
Well, but in fairness, we are planning on at some point, according to Kelly, making a reduction. The only, I think, if I'm understanding this, this is about, do we move forward on a piece of that now to reduce the?
The 20% portion?
No, that already exists, that, right? I guess we've never talked about what the scope of a change would be. In my mind, are we talking just a 10% cut, something simple that just eases a little bit of the, of the, of the friction we have sometimes in terms of placement of landscaping? That's all that I was contemplating, was not a redo of the whole ordinance.
That will take some time and be prioritized later on, is what we're saying. So we won't be in time for perhaps what they're asking.
It's true as well that there, that there is still some conversation that staff can have about.
20%.
Not the scale of what they asked for in this, but, but some compromise, right? So I think we should wait till that conversation happens. I mean, until, for now.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree with that, but if, if we make some kind of change on interim basis, then there, I have to think about this in terms of other.
Right.
Similarly situated, so I'm not looking at this just in terms of JT Logistics, that just happen to be the ones that are raising the issue.
So be gracious. Why don't you just direct, you can just go on record, you want you to direct the planning director to work with the applicant to exercise a 20% reduction possibility. It's in his description. You're going to do it anyway, but maybe they want to go on record saying that you've done something, you could direct them to look.
I'll, I'll move that.
Second.
All right. And I, I.
You know what I mean? Did you get that?
I do believe that that would be a nice gesture, and also Kelly's already worked with them to postpone, you know, the installation, and they were very complimentary on the way things were going, so I don't think we want to stir the pot. It's just more or less, I think there are more conversations in the future when Kelly's ready to work on the zoning ordinance that would include also the landscape, you know, ordinance as well, too, so.
Right.
Those who pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Thanks for doing the memo, Kelly, and for, and I will say that they have a giant stormwater retention pond on the south side, and the Union Pacific ditch essentially is, is draining such that water's getting in, and I think they've regraded it three times, you said, already. It sloughs off, they recompact it, and so Steve and I talked about writing a letter to the Union Pacific and seeing if there's any way that they would allow them to get on their property and just do a little regrading. They won't even, but anyway, so we're going to try and help them from that standpoint, but.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Thanks for doing the memo, Kelly, and for I will say that they have a giant stormwater retention pond on the south side. And the Union Pacific ditch essentially is draining such that water's getting in, and I think they've regraded it three times, you said, already. It sloughs off, they recompact it, and so Steve and I talked about writing a letter to the Union Pacific and seeing if there's any way that they would allow them to get on their property and just do a little regrading. They won't even, but anyway. So we're going to try and help them from that standpoint, but.
Our track record with Union Pacific is terrible.
It's a really poor pond.
Oh, that's, it is very poor pond. Wish I intended it, but.
All right, very good. All right.
It's off the rails.
All right.
Thank you.
Put that in the minutes.
All right. Taylor, you're getting the tail end of what we're doing. All right.
Yes, we're done.
Discover Ames report.
There was an update on the event center, which I know there was also something that occurred at Area. But the site plan is expected to be available by the end of January. There's a capital campaign going on. And if people want information, they're being referred to the FAQs page. That's it right now.
Okay. AREA?
Well, we had a report from Debbie Durham, the Director of the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And it was, it was very interesting to hear what she had to say regarding what the state is doing to create an environment that may not be very positive for growth, cities that want to grow. But she's also very optimistic about the kinds of changes that are coming and the role that the IEDA couldn't, can be playing in the future. And I hope that we're able to take advantage of some of the programs, especially the workforce housing tax credits in greater amounts than we have to date. I do think it was made very clear that not by those of us from the City of Ames, but the Story City city manager, that there is a tough environment for municipalities right now. And I think that the message was loud and clear that that we are not bloated when it comes to what we're spending money on and that the property tax reductions are not helping us to be more efficient. So it was an interesting meeting.
Thank you. All right. Story County Emergency Management met on the fifteenth. And the emergency operations center is actually in the basement of the Story County courthouse. They had looked at relocating to a different building. The budget came in, or the price came in, or the estimates came in way above what we could afford to pay, so they're in the process of renovating part of the basement to get some more space in that area. The supervisors are being, are really helping out in terms of accommodating that. There's money being spent on a bunch of additional technology down there. Got an update on FEMA grants, and as no surprise to anybody, we're not going to be counting on those in the future fiscal years. Those have gone away, and those are in the tune of can be anywhere from less than a hundred thousand up to a couple hundred thousand dollars. And then we talked about the upcoming budget discussion. We have a budget workshop in December that we look at, and I will say this, that the management coordinator does a very good job on the budget, really tries to be respectful, tries to keep the levy rate at a minimum. And so it was a fairly short meeting as meetings go. So our next meeting with them will be on December seventeenth, where we have a budget workshop. Transit?
We approved a contract for the twenty-twenty-five battery electric bus facility improvement project to install charging infrastructure that will help with the five battery electric buses we have arriving this fall. And some of the SiRide maintenance and mechanic staff went out to California to inspect our five battery electric buses earlier this month, so we're excited for those to arrive very soon. And then just wanted to also note that there will be free rides on SiRide on Election Day.
All right. Counsel comments. Emily, why don't you start tonight?
Hi, everyone. Thank you all for being there for the joint meeting last week. I thought it was a really nice meeting. I'll be working with the senators that, that were all talking at that meeting, and hopefully I'll have, I'll be sending you guys emails and sending emails to staff about all of the things that were addressed, and then that's really all I have. I wanted to say Happy First Responders Day. I saw our Instagram post about that this morning, but I just wanted to call it out during the council meeting and thank all of the first responders for everything they do for all of us. So, thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Rach, anything?
Nothing tonight.
Yep.
So it's interesting, the impact of the federal shutdown. November first, SNAP benefits in twenty-twenty-four. There were four thousand, sixty-five individuals using SNAP benefits in Story County. And I've done some research looking at what cities are doing around the United States. I can't find any examples of cities who are attempting to backfill this. There are a handful of states that are looking at this. If we, if this federal impasse is not resolved, I think council should look at doing something to help with this issue of the SNAP benefits and maybe contributing something to our local food bank. So we'll watch this carefully. Hopefully we'll get a resolution, but I think we should take a look at this. That's all I have tonight.
Amber, anything?
I'd agree.
Just a reminder about the town budget meeting that will be on Thursday, November sixth, here in city council chambers. So if there are individuals who have an interest in seeing some project go forward, that is the start of the process.
What time is that?
Six PM.
Thank you.
We received an invitation to the Gold Star Hall ceremony on Monday, November tenth, at four fifteen PM at the Memorial Union on campus. And I just wanted to make sure that other residents are aware that that ceremony exists, and it's a really good opportunity to celebrate our veterans as well as our active service members. And I would hope that others might take the opportunity to come out to the Memorial Union on the tenth.
Yeah, I went for the first time last year, and it's, it is a remarkable remarkable ceremony and program. It's quite moving. Thanks for reminding us of that. Rollin', anything tonight?
No, nothing for me. Thank you.
All right. Mark tweeted, does council have justification to go into closed session?
Yes, Mayor, the council does. Iowa Code Section twenty point seventeen subsection three allows the council to go into a closed session for strategy meetings regarding collective bargaining.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Beatty Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Cory Erri?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
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 Thank you.